Good evening. My name is Jim Reese and I would like to call to order the regular meeting of the Santa Monica City Planning Commission for February 16th. This time is now 5:37. I can ask staff to have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Fresco?
Here.
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Here.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Landris?
Here.
Commissioner Raskin?
Here.
And Cher Reese?
Here.
Great. We'll move on to our first item, which is the Director's Report.
Good evening, Commission. Coming up at our next Planning Commission meeting, which is on March 2nd, we will have a discussion on the HCD comments on the housing element. For those who received by the city last week and we are in the process of talking to HCD, making sure we understand the comments and we'll be ready to talk to the Commission about it on March 2nd, hear your thoughts. Also, a resolution of intention for SB 9 ordinance. Coming up at City Council, well, actually, last week, we had the mid-year budget discussion. There were a few positions added back to the, not just our department, but other departments, in no way is it getting back to pre-COVID levels, but some mainly administrative level positions are being restored. So that's a positive sign. Upcoming at City Council on February 22nd is the Carlsorp Appeal. If you recall, that's when the Commission saw many months ago, it's been quite a while since you ruled on that project, but it's been pending appeal for all this time. And then at the council on March 8th, SB 9 study session. And then another project the Commission saw, the Wellness Center on 20th Street. That project, as I think you know, was appealed, so it will be heard by the council on March 8th. And then it's not showing here, but on March 22nd, the St. John's Development Agreement will be going to City Council. And housing element updates. Yeah, as I already mentioned, the HCD comment letter was received on February 8th. And that letter, I think, has been distributed to the Commission and is posted on our website. And because of the comments and our need to really understand what what they're asking for and what it will take for us to provide the responses, we are pausing on the implementation actions in order to figure out what our next steps should be. And that concludes my report. Have me answer any questions you might have.
Great. I believe we do have questions for you, so Commissioner Landris will start us off.
Thanks, David. I was just curious, how does the budget change affect your capacity to move forward with the remaining DAs and also handle the appeals? And I was just wondering, how many appeals are pending before council?
So, let me start with the DAs. So fortunately, we are in a in a pretty good position in terms of DAs. But some of you probably recall that there was a time when we had upwards of 30 pending. Fortunately, we are down to two. And one of them is St. John's, which I, as I said, we're we're taking forward to council in March. And then the other one is the Ocean Avenue Hotel at Ocean and Santa Monica Boulevard that we're planning to bring to the Commission this spring and get to council by early summer. So as far as our planning is concerned, we hope to be through both of those major DAs by mid-year. And there are no others pending and, you know, never say never, but I don't anticipate there being many DAs in our future. So that's the DA front. You know, the positions that we're we're just, that we just got, don't really impact that because we don't get those positions until, I mean, it'll be a few months before they actually come on board. So they won't really help out much there. In terms of other projects and, you know, it helps some. I mean, again, most of these positions that we got in the department are administrative because that's where we had the biggest cuts. So I think what it really does, it just relieves some of the, like planners, for example, some of the managers like Jing from having to do some of that that work. So it just gives people more backup and also will help us particularly in the City Planning Division, you know, in terms of meetings, if we go back to in-person meetings. We needed more staff, more staff assistance, like we have tonight with Melissa, more people to help and depending on how the the meetings are structured going forward, when we go back to in-person, we could even need more staff. So, you know, it helps with those types of things. You know, I think because we're just, we're not even getting back to where we were, it doesn't mean that we'll be able to take on a lot of additional work. It's really just
Right.
kind of maintaining what we have.
And how many appeals are pending before council? I had heard a pretty shocking number, so I wanted to verify.
I don't have the number off the top of my head. There are quite a few. Some of them are landmark appeals that have been around for a while. And then some are Planning Commission. Jing, I don't know if we have a list.
Yeah, we have, we have eight pending appeals. Wow. As David mentioned, there's a good number of them that are landmarks appeals. And because of the pandemic, a lot of that, the appeals actually got deferred from scheduling because, you know, there were a lot of other items that had to take precedent on councils. So really what you're seeing here is not that eight appeals were filed in, you know, the last few months. It was almost like you can think of it maybe of two years of appeals plus new ones, you know, that have been filed recently. And, you know, we're trying to get them on calendar now as we have, as we have the opportunity to do so.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any other questions for the Director? Being done, we're going to move on to the next section of our agenda, which is Planning Commissioner announcements. And I would like to, before we get to that, I'd like to start with a public comment procedure announcement. Please note tonight's procedures for public comment, we are accepting real-time oral public comment by phone for each item. Please check the top of the posted agenda for the phone number to call. Once the caller queue for each item opens, the caller queue will open when each item is introduced and will close after the fifth public commenter has been heard. Again, just to highlight, it opens as soon as we start talking about the item and then it closes after the first public comment per commenter has provided their comment. Written comments received up till noon today have been read by the Commission. Comments received after 12:00 PM today will be considered part of the record of the proceedings, but may not be posted online with the Planning Commission agenda prior to the meeting. One final comment is the moderator chat in blue jeans is for technical help only for administrative staff. It is not for public comment. It is not for commissioners to interact with each other or the public to interact with commissioners. In fact, commissioners cannot see the chat and comments will only be responded to by city staff. At this point, commissioners, do you have any announcements yourselves? Commissioner Lambert?
I just wanted to let the Commission know, I've let Melissa know that I will not be at the March 16th meeting. So I'm not sure how that plays out with the housing element process, but I won't be there.
Thank you. That's important information. Commissioner Fresco?
On that same topic, I will actually be out of town for almost the entire month of March. I will be here for March 2nd and then I leave on the 3rd.
Okay. Well, that certainly makes life a little more interesting, but I hope you have a nice time away.
Chair, I'm going to make it more interesting. I'm a maybe for April 6th. That is, that is one of the spring break weeks.
Got it.
I'm trusting we're not coming back in person for a while, so if it were in person, that would be an almost certainly not.
Okay. That you just reminded me on vacation, you can do virtual meetings, as I learned on the last, our last meeting, as I was on vacation. But anyways, thank you for that and we will coordinate our agenda accordingly. Any other announcements? With that, we're going to move to the consent calendar. We have item 2A, which is 1124 7th Street. We will open the caller queue for public comment on this consent item. And I'd like to ask if any commissioners, while we're allowing that caller queue to open, if any commissioners have any comments or want to pull this item? I see Commissioner Fresco's hand up.
I would like to pull the item, please.
Okay. We're still opening the caller queue. I think we're going to have to vote on that. Actually, I, maybe we do not. If we're, we're pulling it off the consent calendar, so no vote is required. Let's not, let's not do that right. Let's do the ex parte first.
Okay.
Anybody? Mr. Fresco?
I had a meeting with the applicant team on Zoom on February 9th and they showed me the project. And I had a phone call today with a landscape architect in the city and I talked about planting depth for trees with her.
Great. Commissioner Landris, I saw your hand up, I believe?
Yeah, I have, I had a meeting, I mean, I had a number of scheduling emails with the with the applicant team, but my meeting was yesterday, the 15th was still yesterday, yes. At 11:15 AM with Parham Hakimi, Howard Lacks, Sergio Ortiz, Manuel Gutierrez de Rueda, Robert Chaddles, Sidney Landris, Don Prechepurk, Boydell and Victor Kachwa. We talked about, actually mostly we talked about the placement of the bike parking. That will surprise no one.
Other, Commissioner Lambert?
I had a meeting with the development team on Monday at 3 o'clock and we talked about the landscaping and the slats on the windows and the marketability of the units and then constraints about that. And then today I visited the site, I wandered around. And that's it.
Any other ex parte communications? I do not see any other commissioners and I have no ex parte. We're at that point where the staff report would be appropriate. So Commissioner Lambert?
I would, in the interest of time, waive the staff report. I don't know how they feel about that.
I would second that.
Is there a discussion on that item?
Yes. Not knowing what's going on, I would, in the interest of acknowledging that we have a long meeting tonight, informally, to the extent that there's an awareness on the part of the applicant of why Commissioner Fresco may have pulled the item, I don't know why she pulled the item. Perhaps the applicant might focus its comments on what it knows to be the issues. And if there are other issues that come up, we can certainly address them through questions, but I think, I'm assuming that since this is all in consent, we're all familiar with this staff report on the project. That would be my.
I would hope so. That is our, that is our role. Okay. With that said, can we have a vote?
Yeah. And just before you vote, I did want to note, although there's no staff report, that there is an updated STOWA that's been posted to the item. So, you know, we were going to note that in our presentation, but I just want to make sure that that, that we are making sure that everybody knows that it's been updated and it's in red line changes, so you can see.
Yeah, I see now.
So Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Landris?
Yes.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yes.
And Cher Reese?
Yes. And with that, I think we'll have the applicant presentation. And Melissa, help me out. What do we have? 15 minute for presentation and three minutes for rebuttal? And you don't need to take all of either of those times if you don't need them?
Correct.
Fantastic. Welcome to the meeting, Mr. Lacks.
Thank you. Good evening, Cher Reese and members of the Planning Commission. Since we do not have a staff report tonight, it's been waived, I do want to do a presentation through the project. So let's just get going so we can move through it very, very quickly. Okay. 1124 7th Street Historic Preservation Project with the addition of three units in the back. Sounds like many of you know the site very well. You've walked the site. It's three parcels north of the corner of 7th and Willisher, right on the edge of the northeastern, edge of the downtown district. The site is 50 by 150. We have a 17-story building to the north and a three-story building to the south and across the alley, a two-story building, all residential. Next. And Reed Park, of course, directly across the street to the east. Next. Okay. So our quick, quick view of the property designated landmark. And the landmark was back listed as a city landmark in 2018. There is a detached garage in the back along the alley that will be removed and that is not part of the parcel designation. Building to the north is 17 stories, senior citizen housing with a height of 156 feet. And then 37 feet to the south, three-story apartment. And then, of course, as mentioned, across the alley, two-story apartment building. Next. Okay. The landmark building, I'd like to bring in Robert Chaddle to just speak on this slide. I think we can hear him if he gets close to the microphone.
Just briefly, constructed in 1907 at the southwest corner of Santa Monica Boulevard and 9th Street. The building was relocated to this site in 1922. It is a hip roof, queen and neoclassical cottage. It has a number of identified character defining features, including the hip roof dormer on this east elevation, which is the primary facade, the recessed circular porch and the various bell-shaped roof and a bit of a flare at the base of the wall. And I'll note that the brick foundation was not identified as a character defining feature. Back to you, Howard.
Great. Thanks, Robert. Next. Okay. Area view of the site, again, as mentioned, 7,500 square feet in the R2 district. We are proposing to move the landmark building forward. So it has a 15-foot setback, which will be in line to the property directly to the south. Next. Next slide.
Staff, are we running the, are we running the PowerPoint?
My associate is in Los Angeles. There you go. Okay. So moving the building forward. And I do want to, I do want to, whoop, hold tight right there. I do want to mention that we did go to the Landmarks Commission as a float-up or a preliminary review back in July. And we did receive a few comments, which we've addressed. The main comment was the dormer that we've added to the south slope. That's the left dormer. And then a dormer to the right, which is equal to that. And we've addressed it and we've reduced the height. At this point, I do want to bring in Manuel, who's my associate architect on the project from Nearlight, to talk about the concept of the back building and the louver system. Manuel, you there?
Yes, I'm here. Can anybody see me?
Yes.
Hi, everyone. Could you advance, please, Parham?
Yes, thank you. Well, there are a few key things that this building has to do and one of them, first and foremost, is the privacy issue. We are proposing a wood louver facade, probably cedar or some similar wood, which will resemble the original cedar shingle roof in the cottage. And the idea is that this screen will go around the building and somehow will protect it from the north building, 17 stories, and also from the south building, which has a circulation corridor right next to it in the south. Next. Yes. So here you can see the south elevation of the south building and this screen. We're also proposing at this south elevation, an opaque glass brick just in the south tower, which will also provide some privacy between these two circulation points, our circulation tower and the circulation of the, of the building in the south. Next. Here you can see the effect of the screen and the glass brick in the south and how we are trying to protect each other through these materials. But we also want to provide But we also want to provide occupants with some, uh, maximum, uh, views, um, while living there and, and maximum sun also. Um, by having floor to ceiling, um, um, glass and letting the screen be some transparency layer so you can see through and beyond to the park, to the sunset and the surroundings. So the screen doesn't feel, um, like it's blocking these views. Um, next, please. And finally, also, this facade, uh, needs to perform. And what I mean by perform, I mean, uh, it needs to perform some, some energy standards. And, and this double layer of glass floor to ceiling and, and louvers, which are offset to each other like three to five feet, uh, creates a buffer zone, uh, like an insulating area that, um, gives the occupant the opportunity to control the sun, um, and the heat gain and also the temperature. And please, next. And, uh, we have our CBA, uh, energy consultant engineer on board that he could answer all the questions. But this is an example of what we've been working with these, uh, engineer consultants. Different times of the day, uh, we did some, uh, solar radiation test. And you see the one with louvers versus the one with no louvers. And you know, the low radiation in the one with louvers is significant. And where you see some red in the no louvers. So we've been working together to make this work. Back to you, Howard.
Great. Thanks, Manuel. A couple of things I want to point out before we move on to the next slide. Um, the city's historical consultant did review this in detail and felt that the louvered system creates a wonderful backdrop to a landmark building. And it is compatible with the secretary's standards. And it also, um, complies that there's no significant impact to the historic resource, um, per SEQA as well, too. But what's interesting about this project is a little, a little more different than the other ones you've seen is it's a preservation project. It provides additional housing, uh, which we desperately need, as we all know. Um, it's a single family, um, house. We're turning it into four, um, units. And it provides compatibility per secretary's standards. Next. So to do all of this, um, we're asking for, um, five or six modifications. And I review them very quickly. Building height in the R2, as we all know, is 30 feet. We're asking for an additional six feet to 36 feet. Um, therefore we can get from two floors to three floors. Thus, we can now get four units on the site, which is allowed in the R2 district by right. Uh, front yard setback, we're moving the building forward to 15 feet, lines up with the building to the south. Side yard setback, um, per, uh, the municipal code in the R2 district is eight feet. And a few small areas, we're asking for six feet two, but we do have generous setbacks everywhere else. Uh, provisions for unexcavated side yard setback, four feet in the R2 district. We're asking for both sides to be excavated. You will not see it and it provides us the necessary parking. Provisions for unexcavated front yard, 100% versus 50%. And parcel coverage, um, the added store footage for the third floor. We are less on the second floor and a little bit more on the ground floor. That's giving us three, actually four viable condominium multi-family. Next. Oh, lab time. Okay. Moving the landmark building forward to 15 feet. So we're moving it forward 17 feet. Next. You can see unit one is the historical landmark and then unit two is a flat with unit three and unit four, those squares are stairs and an elevator to get to the unit three and four above unit two. The existing setbacks, the landmark, it's not standard on the site. The existing is 13 feet seven inches to the south side yard. Six feet two on the north. We are not changing the, uh, position of the landmark building, north and south. And our request for one and two, these side and front yard setbacks is the 15 feet we talked about. Six feet two inches where we see that 10 feet four, and that is the area that we'll want to move a little closer to the setback. And then on the south, um, 32 feet where the stair towers are, moving it to six feet two. Next. Um, lay of the land, unit one, the landmark, we do have a hyphen connecting the landmark to the, to the addition. Next. A typical hyphen, which we've done in the past. Next. Inside of hyphens, which actually expands the landmark building and expands it into the addition. Next. Second floor. And in the landmark building, we are in the existing attic space and that's why we are posing two dormers, actually three dormers with a closet, the master bedroom. So we do now have a viable landmark that is, um, about 1,800 square feet. Next. Third floor, which is the second floor of unit three and unit four. Unit three and four are townhouses on top of the unit two, which is a flat. Next. It's important to note that the addition to the landmark building is, um, about 73 feet from the front property line along Seventh Street. So it takes up the west portion of the site along the back alley. Path to site is where the addition is going to be. Next. Uh, request three and four, additional building height and floor, major modification. We're requesting to go from 30 feet to 36 feet, as you see in the diagram. That's giving us an additional fours of six feet. So we can now ask for the second floor of unit three and unit four, which is the third floor of the development. And it's important to note, too, that we would like some trees along the front yard. We, um, we are going to backfill the landscaping in the front yard 100%. So we have a depth of minimum two feet four. I talked with the landscape architect, um, this week. And we can actually drop the backfill so we have greater depth of three feet six inches by reducing the slab height in the parking garage. So we can get taller trees. Our landscape architect is here, um, to discuss this in more detail. Next. We can see our building as it relates to the building to the south and the north. Next. The parking garage, we're asking, uh, request five or six unexcavated side and front yard. The four feet to the north and then the unexcavated yard along the front yard. But that will be depressed and backfilled for mature landscaping. Next. And we have a landscape plan here. Um, so we are here to discuss it. And our landscape architect is at this point, ready to discuss anything you want regarding the trees in the front, landscaping in general. And that's the end of my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, commissioners, do we have any questions at this moment? Commissioner Lambert, I see.
Say, Lambert?
Commissioner Lambert?
Um, Howard, I just have a question. I think I know the answer to it, but I want to clarify. Do the louvers have anything to do with the modifications you're asking for?
No, they do not. The modifications are the additional six feet of height and the second floor.
So the louvers are ancillary, excuse me, louvers are ancillary to essentially what's before the commission tonight.
That's, that's correct. And, um, again, um, we feel and the city's historical consultant feels that they are compatible to the landmark building.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Fresco, I believe I saw your hand up. You're muted. You must be muted.
I am muted. Um, I just had a question that kind of popped in my head, like, not with the applicant privately. And I can't remember if I asked about it or not, but it just stood out to me again. In both presentations, uh, it was noted that the brick foundation is not part of the character defining features of landmark. And I'm wondering why that's such an important point to make in all the presentations? And is there a reason you have a particular aversion to maintaining the look of a brick foundation?
Yeah, and, um, Robert Chaddles and I did talk about that. And Robert, um, if you can come on to the line.
And I'm back. And we, uh, in one particular project, the on-house on the USC campus that we relocated, we did do brick veneer on the foundation and it caused, um, uh, a bit of an offset at the foundation because what supports the, uh, wood framed, wood stud wall above the, the foundation, um, uh, needs to rest on the structural support of the foundation wall. So it's, it's quite challenging, uh, to do. So, um, you know, it would likely be, uh, veneer. Um, and if you, uh, you know, want to give that direction um, or encourage the landmarks commission to, um, uh, give that, uh, consideration in their certificate of appropriateness review, we're certainly, um, welcome to that. But I, I could just tell you that it's, as a practical matter, a bit of a challenge.
Um, can I just ask you, I know this is kind of a little detail, but when, uh, it was designated, were you on the team and was it discussed by the landmarks commission? Or was it just omitted inadvertently?
Um, i- in several projects of, of late, the brick foundations have not been identified as character defining. In this case, at the time, in 2018, um, the city prepared the landmark nomination. The nomination comes from the, uh, in this particular case, from the, the property owner. Um, and we prepared that skeletal, um, application. But the city prepared its own, uh, nomination. I believe in this case, it was prepared by Architectural Resources Group. Um, uh, so you know, it goes through as a city, uh, application. The rules have changed somewhat today with COVID. Um, and the property owner applicant, if that's the case, um, would prepare a more fulsome application. But I don't think it was ever intended to be specifically excluded. I'm pointing it out, um, because it's challenging to accomplish a move like this and preserve or replicate a, reconstruct a brick foundation.
Good. Thank you very much for that answer.
Commissioners, any other questions right now? Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Maybe, uh, Howard can speak to this. It seems like the roof is about half occupied with a roof deck, which is fine. But the other half could be pressed into service for some solar collectors if you weren't totally shaded by your southern neighbor. Maybe you can speak to that, um, as we, uh, try to get that to be more of a standard thing rather than a unique one-off thing in our city.
Absolutely. Um, Parham, if you can move to the roof plan? Okay, so where it says, um, unoccupied roof, this is where we plan to put PV panels. Um, it is a requirement that we have to do this on the new building as we go through plan check and this is.
You did some community outreach and you told me the results. Can you repeat that, please?
I sure can. Yeah. So, um, I did get a call from, um, sorry, Rose Swid, who I guess represents, uh, 1112, the senior citizens building to the north. Um, I answered a question and then I offered to have a community meeting in their community room. And she shared with me that would not be possible because of COVID. Um, and then I offered to do a Zoom meeting with anyone that, um, would like to, uh, participate in the Zoom meeting. I never heard back. Uh, at 1128, the south property, I did send out flyers to all the tenants. I gave them my email address. I asked them if you're interested in a Zoom meeting to send me your email. And we would set up a, a, um, Zoom community meeting. I had one, um, guest and all of us and one that's here today, my project team, we did do a presentation, uh, for that tenant.
Thank you.
Mr. Landers?
Just wanted to acknowledge that we talked about moving the, um, the short-term bike parking and appreciate where you moved it and just, uh, wonder if you, I, I saw it on the screen, but I wondered if you'd encountered any challenges related to moving it to the side like that.
Um, no challenges.
Great. Thank you.
Worked out well.
Where did you move? What's changed?
So, so I made the observation during our meeting that the, um, that the bike part, that the short-term bike parking, uh, was, um, not ideal in terms of its visibility from the street. Um, and that no one, sadly, we live in a community where it is not a rational decision at this point to leave a bike outside, um, and really believe 150% that it's going to be there when you come back to it. Um, and I, I pointed out that the, um, there was a project on 14th Street that we saw a few months ago that had put the short-term bike parking on the side of the building, um, which meant that bikes would be far less of a target of opportunity. Um, that would require sort of an affirmative decision by someone who's on the peril for bikes to go look for them. Um, and that there might be even more eyes on, on the bikes that way. So, um, they actually identified the spot, uh, which is behind the staircase down to the garage. Uh, you can see it, um, net on the lower right side of this, of this slide where it says short-term bike parking, just, just to the, uh, left of the stairs. Um, and that's a, that's a more reasonable place for it, in my view.
Did you change anything else?
Um, I.
Oh, yeah, we were, we redesigned the whole project yesterday, Nina, didn't you hear? Yeah. Okay, I, I have a question then on the, on the landscape, because I was I was a little concerned about the 100% excavation and trees and I'd like to see more trees. So can we talk a little bit more about the depth of that? You said that you had two feet you were originally planning for and you now think you can lower the, the roof of the sub training parking to get to what depth?
Yeah, yeah, to 42 inches. So first, before we go to the landscape plan, Parham, if you can go to the building section. Okay, can we zoom in on the front yard? Is that possible? And if you can't, that's okay. So where it says, um, in the lower right, it says backfill and then I put a green cloud around it. That's the front yard. Typically, as you know, Commissioner Reese, um, we're allowed to, um, excavate only 50%. We are excavating 100%. That's one of the requests for modification. However, what we're doing is we're taking the parking garage and moving it further down. So that way we can get a backfill of three feet six inches, 42 inches of depth. I have discussed this, um, with our landscape architects on this. And, um, Don, maybe you can chime in at this point and talk about really the landscaping and the, the type of trees we can put in that area at 42 inches.
Hi, good day, good evening, good evening, everyone, chairs and commissioners. Uh, my name is Don Presha, uh, landscape architect with SQLA Inc. Um, you know, we've been working with project with Howard in Santa Monica for the last 15, 20 years. So, um, basically right now, um, you know, the soil depth, the excavation is how it was given. Originally was 30 inches. And due to that, originally we proposed a surcis occidentalis, which is a smaller, you know, smaller tree. You can call it a large shrub. Um, we should do well in, in that type of soil, about 30 inches, uh, depth. But then, um, you know, the best that we need, uh, you know, bigger, more mature trees, taller in height, we need more vertical. So Howard was, um, willing to drop it down to 36. You know, 36 inch box should be enough for, I am like, what, what I suggested on the newer, uh, new, newest, uh, selection, like a fruitless olive, you know? newer selection, like a fruitless olive, you know, low maintenance, clean, not messy, probably 1%, you know, pollen, basically like allergy for people with allergies, you know, it's, it doesn't give up that much for, for that at all. And it will work fine, shell root would do just fine in 36 inch depth. Rule of thumb, you know, that I go after would be like for anything from 20, 25, you know, feet of canopy, a fee which all lives around that, that size, you would need around like, I would say 220 to 400 square, something like cubic feet of, in this case, we have three foot deep and then all that front yard to make up for the, the cubic, you know, cubic feet of it. So, you know, and it's, it's not a huge tree, you know. So it would work just fine in a 36 inch soil depth. You know, we can do a three back and with the scale of the project, with the style, it should still work out, you know, to us, it should work out really well.
Okay, great. Great. Let me, let me clarify though, though, because I think I've heard two, I've heard two numbers. I thought Howard said it was 42 inches and you said it's 36. You just get a little clarity on which.
Maybe I could do that, if that's okay. The 36 inches was given to me by SQLA, the landscape architect, say that would be more than sufficient for larger trees and canopy. However, I, I wanted to even push it more, which I can. So I pushed it to 36 inches or 42 inches for wibble wood. I could probably even wiggle a little bit more than that, but I want to make sure that I do have the required height for any kind of drainage and plumbing that I cannot exceed about seven feet clear from the bottom of my drain lines in the parking garage if I cover.
Okay. At 42 inches, 42 inches is great. If you can, if you can commit to that, makes me very happy. That's very consistent with what I see on my podium, podium types of projects as a, as a minimum requirement. I appreciate that. And, and you know, I was trying to look at your plans and see where could we do this on the side yards? And I don't think I came up with any areas because of the tightness of your site, but to any, the extent you can ditch any more trees in that kind of depth, it would be a benefit to our city.
Okay. Commissioner Fresco?
This is kind of the heart of why I wanted to pull this item. And so Howard, can you push it to six feet? My, the landscape architect I spoke to told me that if it can be six feet, that you can plant pretty much any tree and it will be healthy and safe and the roots will have more places to go for drought resistance and all those kinds of things and they'll just have more longevity. And as Commissioner Reese said, the way it is now, it's pretty much like a planter. It's wide, but it's still a planter and to really have a real tree canopy like our loose and our tree element tell us we should, I feel like, and there's other reasons which I'll go over in discussion, but can you do six feet? Can you slope it down? You said something about that. What can you?
Or 60 inches. Six feet would be.
I meant six feet. I know I said 60 inches. I meant.
Yeah. Commissioner Fresco, that is pretty deep. I don't even know if I can comply to the slope of my parking garage from when I, when I land my alley to those parking spaces that gets 60 is, and I think it's a little superfluous. It may be too deep, but I'm not an expert. I can bring back Don to say six feet or 60 inches, which is five feet. That, in my opinion, as the architect's kind of pushing it. That's pretty deep. But I will let Don, he's the expert in landscaping. Don, do you want to provide any thought or do you feel 42 would provide us some significant?
To us, 42 would be sufficient, you know, because we do like podium, overstructure planters all the time with the podium, you know, built-in planters. And we do propose something like a 24-inch box tree, 36-inch box tree. And then the height of planter, you know, is based on 42 inches or a little bit higher, should be sufficient because of the, like I, like I mentioned earlier, the cubic feet, you know, the, the soil around it, basically the whole in, in, in reality, in the total of the, the planter itself, you know, 220 for anything up to about 19 feet in diameter, from 20 to 25 feet diameter, which is olive, 400 square, 400 cubic feet. That's like, like, that's like a 10 by 10 by, I don't know, four feet deep, something like that. You know, that, that should be enough for, for plants to thrive. And this is based on, you know, LAFC, like for urban, urban plant, urban forestry for LA as well. It's a rule of thumb that we go by as well. So 60 feet, from my experience, we've never built anything in, you know, I'm sorry, not 60, 6 feet tall, unless they imagine like a podium, second floor, third floor, you know, that's going to be way, way too tall for any, anyone can to see the landscape, basically. So yeah, we've done a lot of rooftop. We've done a lot of podium planting and, you know, 36, it seems to drive just fine. And as, you know, Howard was giving it up to 42 and with the area that's kind of in there, yes, it's kind of acting like an overstructure planter in that area. We have enough soil volume to accommodate two to three trees in that area. Fine. That's, that's my, you know, opinion on that.
Great. Thank you very much. Commissioner Fresco, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, my concern has more to do with the life of the project. This is, you know, we have to assume this is going to be here maybe for decades and ownership changes and the plants that you were engineering to thrive in this amount of soil only have so much of a lifespan and depend on the good irrigation and the good drainage and the good maintenance of the owner and that the new owner even, I mean, people do really goofy things and they say, oh, I don't want that tree anymore. I want a big shade tree. And there's no, it looks like a front yard and it just, I feel like somebody's going to want to put a big tree there to block out the high rise or to make shade or whatever reason at some point. And it's not, it's going to tip over or die or, you know, I just really want to provide a, a real chance of a tree and not a pretend site. So I'm just very, you know, this complete, total pouring of concrete from the edge to end of the site is just making me very, very uncomfortable.
Commissioner Lander?
Well, I don't what Nina just said. Howard, would you be willing, I guess it would be you or the owner to put into the CCR some provision to be planted in the front yard? Given the depth of the soil, so the homeowners association in the future would know what the constraints are. Would that be possible?
Yes.
So, so if we add a condition that that would go to the CCRs, you would be okay with that? Okay. Right?
Sure.
On that note, I mean, the other thing I'm, because part of my concern is that your plants are part of this STOA, should we approve it? And this STOA only controls what you do and not the future, but you do have to do a deed restriction because of the landmark and the, all of the modifications. That's one of the conditions. Could you also note in the deed that the front yard is a planter that is 36 inches or 42 inches deep and, you know, planting should, you know, just so somebody buys this property, they're going to know, oh, okay, no, no sycamore trees here.
Well, again, I, again, I'm not the owner. I don't know if the owner is on here. He should have been here on the sideline for questions, but I don't, as the owner representative, I don't see a problem with it, but I'm not the final say. And there is Victor. Victor?
Yeah, I don't see a problem with that at all.
Okay, there we go. Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Do we have any other questions or concerns right now before we open it up to the public?
Let's hear from the public.
Fantastic. Melissa, do we have any callers?
We did, but it looks like they dropped out. So let me share the screen again and I guess we'll give it a minute and see if we can get any of our callers back.
Okay. We, we got to give them a little time to do that. So if anybody had any other questions or, you know, I might say, Nina, just to respond to the last set of questions about putting it on a deed restriction, the CCNRs that were referenced by Commissioner Lambert basically are a deed restriction on the site. So they run with the land and any good owner is going to read that before they buy it. So that would be another way of getting it in, getting it on there. And then I see Heidi coming in. So let's hear from Heidi real quick.
So just a quick thought on CCNRs. It's not something that the, that the commission usually places conditions on CCNRs, which are, you know, I mean, there, there are certain conditions under our ordinance with respect to creation of a condominium project. However, I, I'm not sure that there would be anything to stop an HOA in the future from amending the CCNRs without the city's, you know, approval or knowledge. I, I don't, because it's a private agreement amongst the, the owners. I, I would recommend perhaps using the deed restriction or something that is more of a city regulated document if you want to place a restriction on future. Because to Commissioner, to, to the chair's point, it does run with the land and, and however, but though with the deed restriction and that is more of a city regulated document.
I'm sold. I'm sold. You're right. They could change the CCNRs. Yeah, I love your opinion.
I've heard Heidi say that before. So that was why I thought of the deed idea.
Good job. Okay. By assuming no callers?
Just got our caller back. So we can go ahead and take them. So hello to our person who just called in. You are now live in the hearing and you have three minutes for your statement.
Hi, I would like to.
Can you?
Hi, Ben. My name is Rose Swid and I represent the residence at 1112 Seventh Street.
Rose, can I stop, can I just put a, stop her time for a second? Rose, I believe your computer is on as well. If you could mute the computer because we're hearing a, a feedback and we want to make sure we hear you very clearly.
Oh, okay. 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 Let me, hold on. Let me, hold on. I hear myself. There's a time lapse, I guess.
Right. Which makes it even more difficult to understand. So I think, I think you got it. No?
I'm doing that right now. Okay. It's muted.
Great. Then go ahead and start again. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Listening to all of this, I'm really finding it a little bit of a desperate kind of project. Moving that house, first of all, I think the architect's rendering picture is very misleading regarding to relative to, to the height of the front house and what's in the back. The front house is not, is not anywhere near 36 feet. So, you know, it looks like it's almost level with the front house that he's showing. That's not true. We do have residents that have a patio right next to the property and to me, it just, it looks ugly. Everything I've seen so far looks ugly. What they're going to rip out as far as the landscaping there with these little box proposed landscapes and telling somebody, oh, well, if you want something better, just want you to know, basically you can't. I mean, it's, I think it's really going to be a detriment to the community having the construction there with seniors who walk up and down the street all day long. They won't have access to that anymore. You got my letter. I hope everyone there at the planning commission got my letter I emailed.
We did, we did get that and that is in the public record.
Yeah, great. And just by and large, I, I'd like to know how the city can even propose this kind of project there. The, the, the square footage of the property is like a postage stamp. To put those kinds of units on, it to me is, is ridiculous. So that's my feedback there. I did have some other people who missed signing my petition, my letter to the city. I have more than happy to send you the additional ones. And if there's any other action being taken on this, I'd like to be notified. I was disappointed that the city gave us two weeks to find out about this and gather ourselves and discuss this amongst ourselves. And I did briefly speak to the architect. There was no point in doing a Zoom meeting because I'm dealing with seniors, most of whom are not that, not that computer savvy. And we can't all cram into a room and, and do, you know, a joint Zoom meeting. I could have done it, but they couldn't have. So that's pretty much my stance on this right now, along with everyone else. It, it just, to me, looks like it's going to be a boost to the owner, but a detriment to the neighborhood. And I don't see.
And thank you. That has been your three minutes.
Excuse me?
That has been your three minutes.
That's your three minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Rose, can you hold on just a second? I think, I don't want to get into a back and forth with you. That wouldn't be appropriate, but I want to just make a couple of comments with this. This is not the city proposing this project. This is a private applicant. What the city has done is prioritized historic preservation and they've created a pathway for this applicant through zoning ordinances that allow them some economic value of their property in exchange for rehabilitating and protecting a historic structure. So this is a somewhat of a unique, a unique project from that standpoint, but it is really prioritizing the historic issues in our city.
I don't see how that would be an exchange. The property is fine the way it is now. How is it an exchange? On the contrary, they're going to move this house practically on top of the street?
Well, I mean, it's all perspective. And again, I didn't want to get into a, a back and forth with you. I just wanted to give you that, that perspective from the city standpoint.
Okay, thank you.
So thank you very much for your comments.
Okay, thanks.
Melissa, do we have?
Yes, one more.
Great.
Hello?
Our next caller is off mute. Hello, you're live in the meeting. Please state your name and you have three minutes for your comment.
My name is Mary McCauley. I'm a resident of 1112 Seventh Street to the north of the proposed property. Do I understand from what the commissioner just said that this is already a go-ahead? This is just looking at details to protect the landmark preservation of the house? Is that what the commissioner just said, Rose?
No, that's, I, I didn't make that statement. What I said was they are, they are requesting, the city is not proposing this project is what I said. And I said the city has created an ordinance that allows for the protection of historic structures and there's exchanges that they have in zoning rules for that protection. We are today having a public hearing on this, on this question where this decision will be, will be made. There has nothing been made at this, no decision's made at this point.
Okay. I have a question then. Does the fact, if there is a protest in the community about this proposed project, does that have any effect on the commission or has the commission already decided to go ahead with the project? I was confused by the conversation in your meeting about that point.
Chair, respectfully, public comment is not a community meeting. And while I'm sensitive to the caller's concerns, I'm a little concerned that we're dipping into a back and forth that would create a problem if, if, you know, I, I think we're kind of veering outside of our guardrails here.
So if the community, then I just.
Ma'am, ma'am, I'm sorry, ma'am. Wait, Sean, Sean, you need to let me run the meeting, please.
I just need to know if the community has a protest, where we would go if it's not in this commission meeting.
Ma'am, there are appeal rights to this decision, one way or the other, that you can, you can investigate and take advantage of. And the, and the rest of the discussion, I think, is out of bounds for, for right now.
So just tell me where I go to find out the appeal. Who do I call? Who do I call about appeal?
Call the city planner on the, on the staff report and they will walk you through how to do that.
Call the city planner?
If you found the staff report, it was written by a city planner and on that, in that in there, there is a planner's name. It's Gina and it has her email and you will be able to reach out.
Okay.
You can also look at the zoning code online, which would outline how to.
Okay, thank you. We will come.
Thank you. Do we have any other callers?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. Now, in our agenda at this point, we, excuse me, I got a few different screens open. So with public, after public comment, do we have a rebuttal from the applicant?
I, I would just say one thing is that I do know that the drawings are that the front building is twenty-three feet tall. It was professionally surveyed by a legal surveyor. And the back building we're asking with thirty-six feet and those drawings were done in a digital format electronically. And so I don't feel they're misleading whatsoever. We've been very, very careful about the height of the building. We've been very careful about privacy and that is one of the reasons why we've introduced this concept of louvers for privacy on both ends of the building as well. So unless any other member of the project team has anything to say, that's all I need to say about this.
Relax. Would, would you please put up a section drawing so we could look at the height, the heights compared again, just so the community can look at that one last time as well?
I, I will. Parham, can you pull up the heights? Probably the second would be, would be the best.
I'm sorry?
The section? The longitude of the section probably would be the best drawing to take a look at. Well, that's the rendering. The top ridge of the landmark goes at twenty-three feet. As you see in the, in the section here, and we are at thirty-six feet. Which is about the same height as the building directly to the south.
Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Commissioners, do we have any other questions before we close the public hearing? Okay, with that, we're going to close the public hearing. We're going to thank Mr. Lacks for his presentation. Ask him to turn off the screen. And I'm going to turn to Commissioner Fresco to start our discussion.
Um, I'm satisfied with, uh, the discussion we had about the depths of the planter and the deed restriction to make sure that people in the future know not to do anything stupid. But I still have a reservation about the louvers. I feel that the building and the lot coverage and the height are all exactly as we envisioned, uh, people would take advantage of and with our special rules for landmarks. But then the addition of the louvers, especially because they're suspended several feet away, we lose all of the design articulation and exist, you know, real massing of the building by adding a unarticulated, more massive overall appearance behind the landmark building. And just as I feel with hedges, I feel that if people want privacy, they should use curtains and drapes and shades in their home. And it's not something that should be in, on the exterior of the building when it adds to the massing or interferes with the public creative way.
Okay, Commissioner Lambert?
Well, actually I have a contravention. I actually like the louvers. And clearly we don't have any control over whether they're louvers or not. That would be a landmark commission decision. Um, but, and I'd like to hear from Commissioner Fonda Bernardi about the energy conservation aspect of it. Because for me, that really, that really sold me on, on their being part of the project. If you'd be willing to tell me.
Well, they do provide a very good buffer because what they do is they create an air gap that's going to not be exactly the same temperature as the outside. And obviously it can be the same temperature as the inside, but having that extra air, it's sort of like when you take a double glazed pane, a window, and you push the panes together, they start acting almost as one. Although they do give you some benefit, the farther apart you can pull them, the more energy benefit you get. And also the more sound drop you get. Now, of course, these are louvers. Sound will go right through them, but there's still that feeling of some sort of psychic space that you're going to be able to enjoy, that you have some level of privacy. To be honest, the building to the south of us is very menacing in terms visually. There's people walking by quarters all the time looking into your space, you know, but having this buffer is kind of a, it's a valuable add, I think.
But you, you think it contributes to the conservation, the energy issue that they?
Definitely helps.
Okay, other, other, other commissioner comments? Specifically, if not on the project in general, but on the louvers. So let's see where we are with that as an issue. Askin or Landers, who want to?
I'll, I'll, I'll jump in here. I, uh, you know, I don't, I don't know how much, how much we can really change it. I, I mean, I, I personally would prefer different design, but I, I do like the, the environmental protection. I mean, to the extent that we can make design changes at this point, I would be interested in exploring that, but I don't know if that's within our purview at this moment.
Okay, Commissioner, okay. Commissioner Landers?
Yeah, I'd just like to say for the record that while I, you know, appreciate the opportunity to review this, I believe that if we are going to be moving nine thousand units over the next eight years, TTM, sorry, tentative track maps and major mods on landmarks need to be staff approved. I see nothing in this project. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm going to disagree with my colleague. Um, and I have the floor. We, we, we may want to strengthen our code. We wait, we wait, we may want to make sure that there are guidelines within which projects have to remain, but I appreciate the additional housing that this project will bring. And frankly, I wish that staff could have reviewed it and approved it on its own within the context of our, of our guidelines. So, you know, uh, that's, that's where I am.
Okay, I would, I would entertain a motion right now. Mr. Lambert?
Yeah, I move that we approve vesting tentative track parcel map, uh, twenty-one ENT dash zero 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 six eight. And assuming we can do it at the same time, major modifications, twenty-one ENT zero zero six nine.
Is the, uh, can we add a deed restriction about the tree well and the forty-two inches? And can we add a direction to the landmark commission to look at the louvers? And the mass, well, to consider the massing impacts of the louvers?
No. No, my motion will not include that.
Okay, did we have a second? I'm sorry.
No, we don't.
Sure, I'll second, I'll second it without the louvers. I just think that's beautiful.
Okay, and can I have a friendly amendment to, can we ask that the consistent with what the architect said, that they go to forty-two inches on the, the front? Okay.
Yeah, the tree wells and forty-two inches are part of the motion, right? Leslie?
Yes, yes.
Does staff need a minute to show us the language?
And can we do this together if we have, or if we're making these minor changes?
So, um, sorry, we're just trying to clarify, we, we are writing the condition because per our practice, if you want to vote on the STOA, you need to see the language. Just to clarify, in the front yard, the intent is for a planting depth of forty-two inches?
Right.
I thought we had heard six feet at some point. That's why.
No, we're not. Forty-two.
Got you. Okay. Great. Yeah, we, we actually have that condition written if you'd like to see it. Uh, it's a new, new condition number three. So it reads prior to the issuance of a building permit, a deed restriction shall be recorded, requiring that the front yard shall have a planting depth of forty, forty-two inches for the life of the project.
Yep.
Well, am I sharing the correct screen, Jane?
Yep. Yes, you are. Great. Okay, thanks.
I think there was an additional, additional mention in here. We wanted to say that at forty-two inches, you had to find the appropriate tree is really.
That's what it's supposed to say.
That's where Neil was, was heading. So.
The forty-two inches will be in concrete, literally. What we're saying is that planting in the front yard needs to be appropriate for the forty-two depths, inches of depth of soil that's there.
Whatever she said.
Except for the louvers part.
No.
Right. Well, all right, just, just.
Go on.
Are we? Yeah, I just, just, I'm looking at the condition. I want to make sure that it's actually implementable. And this may be a question for staff about how we write it. Does the city have an approved native tree that is appropriate for a soil depth of forty-two inches?
That's too detailed right now.
That's getting too detailed.
I'm assuming the answer is yes, but.
Yeah, I think we heard that the, um, the olive tree that's been selected is appropriate to the forty-two inches.
Perfect. That's all I wanted to.
What I added to the condition is the planting and tree selection must be appropriate for the soil depth.
Yes.
That is the intent. Thank you.
Great.
So shall I stop sharing?
Yes.
Yeah, you don't need to shout. Stephanie, just the front yard have, but it's a subjunctive. We don't need it, but.
Oh, oh, yeah, was it that? Okay, required. Say again? Sorry?
Requiring that the front yard have a planting depth, not.
Oh, I see. Thank you.
There we go. Thank you.
Excellent. Okay, I'll stop sharing now.
Staff, since, since there were changes made to the STOA in red line, can we just throw those on the screen so that everybody in the community knows?
Oh, I thought I just did that.
No, no.
Prior to the meeting, prior to the meeting, there were other changes.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. Okay. Yeah, you just thank you.
I think it's in the condition one. You can scroll up to that. Um, it's basically, uh,
Oh, yes.
There was a, there was an inadvertent oversight of the minimum side yard setback. The original STOA said it was only for the north side setback. Um, it's actually for both the north and the south. It is actually accurately reflected in the plans. Um, so we, we caught that oversight, um, just before the, the meeting and have updated the STOA to reflect that reduced side yard setback on both the north and side, uh, north and south side yards.
Yeah, it's, um, it's the side of C here.
Okay. But you added the first and second. Or first to it. Okay. Thank you. I think we are at a point where we are.
Can I say something? Can I say something first?
You certainly meant.
I, I thank you. I just want to echo what Commissioner Landers said. I think the fact that we are looking at major modifications just because we have invested in the fact that is really a process issue we have to look at in the future. And whether landmarks are accepted from that is a, is a question, but I, I really think this would otherwise have been solved at the staff level. Uh, and a track map is basically essentially non-discretionary anyway. So I really would like to look at that in the future and I agree with Commissioner Landers about that. That's it.
Remember that when we go through the zoning code update or process.
Yep, yep.
Okay. So we have a, a motion and a second. Can we go ahead and get a roll call vote?
Commissioner Fresco?
Well, I'm annoyed by the louver situation, but I will vote for this to be a good sport. Yes.
Commissioner.
And also I want to know why you keep calling me before Mario, because he's before me in that.
Oh.
Jane is very.
Oh, no, I have my, I'm sorry.
So, Mario, the only person I never ready.
Since you always vote the same.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, voting yes to be the same with Nina.
Commissioner Lambert?
She froze.
I think I heard.
Yes.
In there, other.
Yes?
Yep, Commissioner Landers?
Yes.
Commissioner Raskin?
You're good now, Leslie.
Yeah, I concur with Nina and Mario, but yes.
Chair Reese?
Yes. Fantastic. Okay, next, are we voting on the STOA?
Yes, you should have a vote. Uh, I didn't hear that in your original motion, so if you could have a motion to vote on the STOA.
Sure, I'll move the STOA as amended.
Second.
Second by, move by Landers, second by Lambert. Can we have a, a vote?
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Are you frozen?
No, you are. It's time for you to vote.
Yes.
Commissioner Landers?
I also concur with Mario, Nina and Leslie. Yes.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yes.
And Chair Reese?
Yes. Great. Okay, that's the end of that item. Next, we're going to turn to continued items, which was three A. We continued the zoning code review from our last meeting. Uh, and then we've gotten some new information in the last week, which is asked, which is triggered another continuance of this item until February second. The goal is for staff to gather more information from their meeting with HCD. I'll get there in a second, staff or commissioners. And, um, and then have a more robust conversation when staff has a little bit more information from HCD. With that said, I think I, opening to, I'm opening to a motion to continue and a discussion at that point.
Still moved.
Get a second.
Second.
Okay, now some discussion is, is okay, but let's not get too over our skis on this. Commissioner Landers?
Yeah, um, I, I understand the rationale for the continuance. As a matter of policy and as a matter of what the letter actually says, I think that slowing ourselves down by two weeks is not so great. I will, I, I, I don't want to vote for this continuance. I probably will because I don't want to be that guy who abstains on principle over this. But I really wish we could have had the conversation. I appreciate staff's concerns. I appreciate everything. But when the state of California tells us that we are not where we need to be with respect to ours housing element and they have doubts about our, um, you know, having crossed our Ts and dotted our Is, I think continuing our zoning discussion and tabling it is, is not the right step. I, I get it. I, I really get where staff is coming from. But I don't think that there's anything that we were looking at that we would reconsider um, on the basis of, of what we're hearing. That having been said, I do have questions which I have shared with staff and I think that they are relevant. I just wish we could have continued the discussion and perhaps voted later on, but continued our work because we have a lot in front of us. So with that, I will support the motion, but I just, I'm concerned.
Okay, I'm going to call on the planning manager. So go ahead.
Yeah, I, I, I just wanted to clarify, this item has actually been pulled from the agenda by staff already. So the public has every expectation. The commission is not having a discussion on this tonight. It's actually not necessary for the commission to vote to continue because it was already pulled from the agenda. Um, you know, and I think as you saw in the director's report, we intend to agendize a discussion on the comments on March the second, but there is not a need for the commission to vote to further continue because we will re-notice when we come back with the implementation fees.
Okay, let's, is there any other comments from? Okay, let's, is there any other comments from commissioners before we move forward?
Chair, I, I don't think that's true because we voted to continue to a date certain. And since we did that, we've been in this situation before. I believe we are required to vote to continue. To hold a vote.
And, and I was going to go ahead and take that vote.
Great, thank you.
Didn't need it, but I now see the reporting here.
Okay, um, yeah, I think, and we can discuss this another time. It's only going to be an issue if you do not vote to continue because again, the, the agenda did make clear that the public won't, won't be, that did make clear to the public that the commission would not be hearing this item this evening. So, so we'll just let you vote.
You're going to give us the rope we need to do whatever it is we need to do. Any other comments at this point? Seeing none, then we have a very quick roll call vote.
Commissioner Fondabarnardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert? Okay.
Basically abstaining.
Commissioner, Commissioner Landris?
Reluctantly, yes.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yes.
And Chair Reese?
Yes. Okay, with that, we're, we are at study session 4A. I'd like to poll the commission. Do you guys need a five minute break here really quick? Do we want to dive into this? I see a five minute break is a thumbs up, so it's 7:01. Let's try to be back here no later than 7:10, ready to go. I realize my math is not exactly five minutes, but 7:10, we're ready to go.
Ready and.
Five legislative minutes, it's fine. Five legislative minutes.
Very good. Goodbye, everybody. See you shortly.
I just want you to know that I don't eat 24/7. It's only when I'm on a planning commission meeting that I eat.
It, it does go right to our mealtime, so it's understandable.
It does.
Does. Later. During the meeting, but just later. Excellent, we're all back. Thank you. Uh, staff, are you back there? Can we get going? Please?
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I didn't get my headphones on in time. I thought we were.
No worries.
Okay. Uh, okay, so this is the study session on SB9. Presentation, uh, essentially to give an overview of SB9's provisions. Um, and really the purpose is to, uh, you know, kind of start with the initial understanding of what SB9 is. It's a brand new law that just took effect. Um, and identify areas in the statute that are, um, not clear or just unaddressed and therefore appear to provide opportunities um, for the city to, um, establish its own policies um, within the framework of what SB9 requires. And then ultimately, um, you know, for the planning commission to have a discussion. Um, we, uh, at the end of this, uh, at the end of the staff report and also this presentation, there's, um, a handful of questions, you know, that we're hoping will help guide your discussion in terms of, um, areas that we see, um, because obviously the city is obligated to implement state law. Um, but, uh, you know, there are some open, uh, questions, it seems, that were either, that are unaddressed in the statute, um, that would be helpful to have the commission's thoughts on. Um, and then this will be, we'll also be having a study session with the city council to get that direction. And then, um, the intent is to come back with, um, an ordinance, um, implementing SB9. I, I will note just as a overarching framing of tonight's discussion is that, you know, as I indicated, this is a new law. Um, and, you know, there may be differing opinions about it or how people read it or what have you. Um, and I'll just say that, you know, what we're trying to present is what we read in the language of the statute, just precisely what it says, that's all we can do. Um, and it's been informed by some initial conversations with HCD. Um, HCD has indicated that they will be issuing written guidance, um, you know, around SB9, but it's not coming, um, you know, for probably a, a couple of months. Um, you know, but we, when we have questions, we do reach out just to get some clarification on, you know, is this what was meant, that, that sort of thing. And, you know, they're, they're also looking at it themselves and kind of, um, you know, taking in what's happening across the state with SB9 as well. So, um, I will say, you know, this is just the initial read. This is, you know, we're, we're trying to present what we understand the statute to say based on the language as written. And, um, you know, certainly things may change as further guidance comes out, you know, or we learn more um, uh, through the process of trying to implement the city law. Um, so just some background on this is, um, the city council actually formally took a position on SB9, um, in our early 2021. Um, and they took a position to oppose SB9 as drafted at that time um, due to concerns about the lack of, um, any affordability requirements, um, in the statute. Um, ultimately SB9 has, I think, you know, probably amended a few times since the council had taken that position. Um, ultimately was signed into, into law September 16th, 2021. And as I said, took effect, um, January 1 of this year. Um, in preparation, uh, for the effective date of SB9, um, the city manager in his oral reports to council on December 7th, um, explained that due to lack of specificity in some areas of SB9, um, staff is taking a conservative approach um, in this interim period until we receive council direction. Um, and that's really directly, directly related to some of these areas where SB9 isn't specific or it leaves some question, you know, how you might implement something. Um, so just jumping in, um, first and foremost, what is SB9? Um, basically what it is, is it allows a single unit zone parcels, um, to add more units, uh, with no public hearing and there's two main options. So I think that's the first thing is it, it only applies single unit zoned parcel. So the parcel has to be zoned for single units. It doesn't mean that if there's an existing single unit, you know, we, we have that situation around the city where you might have single unit dwellings in commercial zones or multi-unit zones. SB9 does not apply to those. It only applies to single unit zoned, um, parcels. And, um, it has two options. One is, you know, what we kind of term the duplex option. You can see there allows, uh, two units on an existing parcel. Um, another option is to split the lot. Um, and that's to subdivide, um, a single unit zone parcel into two lots. And then you can combine those two options to get, to create a third option of the combination lot split and the, the two units. Um, so, you know, that's kind of really two options together and they can combine into a, a third option that combines them both. Um, so effectively SB9 makes a duplex, um, a permitted land use in all single, single unit zone parcels um, in Santa Monica. Um, duplex is defined in our zoning ordinance. It doesn't mean it just has to be maybe your traditional notion of what a duplex is. I mean, it just really is about two units on a property. Um, SB9 establishes that a minimum of 800 square feet must be allowed, even if it exceeds zoning standards. So even if it, you know, exceeded parcel coverage or, um, you know, violated, you know, whatever development standard, um, you know, the city must still allow a minimum of 800 square feet. Um, we would want to note that with respect to the by right process um, within the coastal zone, because, um, Santa Monica does not have a fully certified, um, LCP yet, um, that all projects in the coastal zone, um, that need a CDP are heard at the coastal commission. So, um, very similar to ADU projects in the coastal zone in Santa Monica right now. Um, those kinds of projects would still, um, require a public hearing, um, at the coastal commission. Um, so we just wanted to clarify that, that it is, doesn't, doesn't quite have the same applicability for, for projects, um, within the coastal zone. Um, so this is a map showing where, um, SB9, um, could theoretically be used. So this is just showing all of the single unit zone parcels in the city. So that means it's an R1 or an OP1, um, zone. And, um, I'll review just in a moment the preconditions that parcels have to meet, um, because that might disqualify some of the parcels um, in these R1 or OP1 zoned areas. Um, so the first option is that duplex path. Um, you know, as I indicated, it's the by right approvals for two units and single unit zone parcels. And there's sort of four areas of precondition. One is about location. Um, there's a host of anti-displacement measures in order to qualify. Cannot have been, uh, part of an Ellis Act removal within the past 15 years. And also in order to, to, to use the, the duplex option, um, you can't require demolition of more than 25% of the existing exterior structural walls. So excuse me, I went backwards. Um, so you see here just a summary of, you know, what those preconditions mean. So in terms of location, um, there, there are some of these things in the statute that don't apply to Santa Monica. For example, you know, farm, farmland, high fire hazard areas, natural community conservation plan, those are not things that are, um, in the city. But there are other things that are more applicable to Santa Monica like historic districts and designated historic resources. Um, you know, the, a, a parcel, um, that's a designated resource, um, wouldn't be able to qualify. Um, if it's in an earthquake fault zone, it doesn't mean it's automatically disqualified. It just means that the project has to comply with seismic protection, um, standards. Um, there's, uh, some, you know, certain areas in Santa Monica that are in special flood hazard areas and they have to meet the FEMA requirements, um, you know, to the extent that some things are uninhabited for protected species. Um, again, not, not typical throughout the city, but, you know, probably closer towards, um, the um, ocean side of, of the city. Um, as I indicated, in terms of anti-displacement measures, um, uh, parcels, uh, that don't qualify, um, for an SB9 project, um, using that duplex option and some housing with an affordable housing deed restriction. Um, any rent controlled housing would not qualify. And then any housing occupied by a tenant in the last three years. I would note that for rent controlled housing, um, that does include, you know, not just the city's own rent control, um, regulations, but also, um, those subject to the statewide rent control as well would, would be captured, um, under that, that condition. Um, as I indicated, the Ellis Act removal would, would disqualify a parcel from being. As I indicated, the Ellis Act removal would disqualify a parcel from being eligible. And then with respect to demolition, in order to use this duplex option, the project could not propose demolition of more than 25% of the existing exterior structural walls unless the local ordinance allows more than 25%, and the site has not been occupied by a tenant in the last three years. We are looking at this, we received, you know, some questions from some, some of you. And, you know, we are looking at the interplay of this provision with the city's somewhat unique definition of demolition for HRI properties, just to understand, you know, what that means in terms of process for those properties, given that SB nine requires by right approval and, you know, guarantees of a minimum size of unit. We wanted to kind of go through some illustrative scenarios, and I want to put some big caveats around this. These are not site plans, but by any means, we just thought it might be helpful visually to understand, you know, what might be possible and understanding that this is not going to be every single scenario. I think our experience in implementing ADUs has shown that, you know, it is not as simple as it seems. And there are many, many different unique conditions throughout the city, you know, that need to be considered. But, you know, this is taking some very more simple and straightforward, you know, thinking of like, you know, how might SB nine work on a normal rectangular lot with, you know, an existing single unit dwelling? And let's say there's an ADU. So you can see there on the left side, in terms of this duplex path of adding an additional unit, you know, there's, let's say, there's a single unit dwelling and that homeowner has, you know, already has an existing ADU and a JADU, an additional detached SB nine unit, you know, might function very similar to adding an additional ADU. And I think we've been thinking through, you know, what happens to that ADU and JADU? It seems, you know, that they would be allowed to remain as legal non-conforming uses. You know, the JADU is an interesting one, because under state law, JADUs are only allowed as part of single unit dwelling properties. And, you know, when the SB nine unit is added, it becomes a multi-unit dwelling. But I think, thinking it through, you know, sort of would, just the practical reality of, you know, what you do with that ADU. And, you know, we're not, you know, asking people to remove that sort of floor. It didn't seem to make sense. So, you know, that's probably something that we would need to clarify, because the statute does not make that clear at all in terms of, you know, what happens to JADUs. You can see there on the right, another possible scenario is an attached SB nine unit. So this is again, under the duplex option. So this is converting the existing single unit dwelling to a duplex. So this is one where maybe someone decides to add to the back of their house, or maybe they remove some of it to turn it into a duplex. You know, like I said, we were just kind of thinking through these theoretical possibilities. And in this case, again, the existing legal non-conforming ADU, you know, can remain. And then maybe the JADU becomes part of that attached SB nine unit, you know, is, I think, a possibility. But you can see there, that's just sort of conceptually an illustration of, you know, what that might look like in terms of not demolishing more than 25% of the walls in, consistent with the, with the statute. The second option here is the lot split path. So this is basically splitting an existing single unit zone parcel into two lots. And the statute provides some standards that have to be met before the city could approve it. And I would note, the subdivisions, again, does not require a public hearing, right? It's, it's to be approved by rights. So the resulting lots must be at least 1,200 square feet. The both lots have to be equal in size, or approximately, it doesn't have to be exactly equal, but generally equal. Neither lot is less than 40% of its original size. And it has to comply with the city's subdivision requirements. But the statute does prohibit the city from requiring dedication of ride away or off-site improvement as a condition of the lot split. That doesn't mean that that improvement, you know, might not be required as part of the building permit, because it's not a condition of the map itself. But, you know, the city is still allowed to impose just typical improvements that would apply to any other project in terms of, you know, replacing sidewalk and the like. And then the fifth standard is that the parcel cannot have previously been split under SB nine. So basically, you can do this once. You can't split it and then split it again. There's owner occupancy restrictions in the lot split path. And I would note, actually, all of the duplex preconditions apply to the lot split path as well. So the same applicant cannot split adjacent properties in succession. So, you know, they can't sort of piece together a whole bunch of properties and do it together. And then there's an owner occupancy requirement, that the owner has to reside on the parcel for a minimum of three years from the approval of the lot split. And I think, looking at this in combination, it seems that it's intended, the statute is intended to ensure that applicants are primarily the existing property owners, you know, with this owner occupancy requirement, and especially having that three years be from when the lot split is approved. If you just think through the process, approval of the lot split, you know, if it has to be ministerial, it could happen actually pretty quickly. And, you know, the intent, I think this is an area where we've been doing some thinking around it, because the statute just isn't clear on what the practical application of this requirement means. And again, just reminding, you know, we're simply reading the statute as written, looking at the language as written, and trying to understand what was meant by it. This will probably be an area where we're going to need to seek technical assistance from HCD as to, you know, what, what is meant by that? Because it sort of just says, you know, that the owner has to reside on the parcel. So if you took that, you know, to mean literally living on a parcel from the approval of the lot split, it seems that there then must be a dwelling unit that has to remain in place as part of the lot split for three years from the approval. Does it mean vacant lots are not eligible? Because if there's no units who live in, how could the owner occupy the property? And, you know, if that, and if those aren't the case, then it seems that the three-year occupancy requirement could, in theory, cover, you know, approval of the lot split, demolition permitting and construction. And it might mean that the applicant never lives on the property for those three years. And, you know, was that the intent? So I think, you know, those are, these are the kinds of questions, you know, when the statute is not really clear in terms of the practical application of these requirements. Running through now some illustrative scenarios, and again, lots of caveats around these for the lot split. But I'm going to run through just a few that are just showing essentially how you combine the lot split and duplex together. So if you looked at that lot split, it's really just splitting the lot, right? You could, in theory, if there was a property that was large enough, you know, they could just split the lot and do no development. That is allowed under SB nine. But, you know, somebody wanted to split the lot and construct two units on a parcel, you know, sometimes you might think about it as splitting it down the middle. But there's also this possibility of sort of what I'll call kind of like front and back. And you can see here that, you know, if somebody had a house that was, you know, situated such that it met all those conditions for, or all of the standards for the lot split of SB nine, you know, you could do this where you remodel an existing single unit dwelling into two units at the front, and then build two units at the back, you know, just as an example. This is another example, and this is kind of illustrating, you know, what do they mean by their owner occupancy piece? Because this is maybe how someone could do it. If they had an existing single unit dwelling with an ADU, you know, maybe you leave the dwelling, you know, like the ADU on the property, remove the single unit dwelling, you know, you could do the lot split and then add units around it so that you meet the owner occupancy requirement. And then this is kind of another, this is just a variation of what you saw before, where, you know, there's the lot split, and instead of doing a duplex on the, on the resulting lot, someone could, you know, build two single unit dwellings with, with an ADU. The lot split option within SB nine is, you know, does not obligate the city to allow ADUs or JADUs. So basically, the city isn't obligated to allow more than two total units per lot. So in theory, the city could say, you know, you could add an ADU, but not a JADU. So those are, you know, that is some local discretion, it seems, that the statute does allow with respect to what happens on those resulting lots. The process review for SB nine projects is really no different than any other normal projects. So you can see for, you know, option one, the sort of duplex path. If anyone were to propose something, you know, they would submit it to planning for zoning review first, just to make sure that it meets, you know, SB nine's. I think that's, it's going to be a relatively cursory review. Do you meet SB nine's conditions? And then submit for plan check. And it would go through all the normal reviews for departments for compliance with all the codes. And then if it meets that, then the permit is issued. For the lot split path, it's really the same process for subdivision maps that we do now, except that there will be no public hearing. So, you know, they wouldn't come to the planning commission. But the same steps in terms of, you know, making sure that it, you know, most people would start with the county engineer, and then submitting it to Public Works for Approval as to Form, then submit it to planning, you know, for your formal, I think we're thinking as maybe some kind of, you know, termination or something that says your subdivision is approved. It would need to go to council for approval of that final map, which is a functory step, and then submitting for plan review, and then permit issued. So, you know, the thing, that's probably something that we're going to have to look at. You know, we'll, we'll have to, what one of the areas we'll have to obviously amend is the city's land division ordinance to kind of think through procedurally. You know, what makes sense and what's required by, by the MAP Act to make those lot splits work. The kinds of standards that would apply to SB nine projects, you know, we're not writing up new standards per se. The city just went through a whole process to update the R1 standards to address community concerns about size of new homes. So they would apply, you know, to SB nine projects. And, you know, one of the major improvements that came out of that R1 standards update was kind of a differentiation in parcel coverage for the retention of existing homes. So, you know, if you added on to an existing home, you got greater parcel coverage of 55%. Whereas, you know, new home construction was limited to 45%. I would note that, you know, to the extent that any of the R1 standards constrain the ability of an applicant to achieve 800, a minimum of 800 square feet, you know, those standards would not apply. So, you know, in no way could the city say, like, you know, you didn't, oh, I'm sorry, you know, you've run out of parcel coverage, or, you know, you've, like, you don't meet this, this particular standard in the R1. You know, we would be required to still permit that SB nine unit, even if it exceeded the zoning standards in the R1. So I think that's just something to be clear. There may also be situations where existing single unit dwellings are not using all of the parcel coverage, you know, on the property. So in that case, you know, I think there was a question whether 800 square feet would be the, you know, the limit. That's not something that is, you know, being contemplated at the moment. If someone has the available parcel coverage, they could certainly be larger than 800 square feet. It's just the statute requires that minimum 800 square feet. This is just a comparison of existing R1 standards versus the standards that are authorized by SB nine. So you can see there are setbacks. There's some pretty market differences in the R1 zone. Generally speaking, it's minimum 10% of the parcel width is the required setback. So, you know, if you think there might be a typical 50-foot wide lot, right, that's five feet. Within SB nine, it authorizes the city to require setbacks, but only up to a maximum of four feet from side and rear parcel lines. And importantly, no setbacks are required for existing structures, or structures reconstructed in the same location with the same dimensions as the existing. We also cannot require the correction of existing non-conforming conditions, nor can the project exacerbate those non-conforming conditions. You know, so I think, you know, that maybe matters if it triggers any demolition definitions or what have you. You know, the city could not require that those non-conforming conditions be corrected. For ADUs and JADUs, so for SB nine projects utilizing both the duplex and the lot split options, SB nine is clear that ADUs and JADUs don't have to be allowed in those situations. And if there are existing two units on a parcel that has been split, you know, the city could say you don't get an additional ADU or JADU. Again, that's really keeping within the, the meaning of SB nine, you know, that the city's not obligated to allow more than two units on each resulting parcel. And so, you know, comparing that to R1 standards, which is a local AD ordinance that allows multi-unit properties to either convert existing non-habitable space to ADUs or to add to detached ADUs. So that's just a little bit different. It's just a different pathway that, you know, if somebody owned a single unit dwelling, you know, that you, it seems the city could say, you know, you can choose an SB nine project or to go down the ADU path. But, you know, we don't have to allow both of them to be used together. In terms of parking, within half mile of high-quality transit areas or major transit stops, the city, excuse me, the SB nine does not allow the city to impose parking requirements. So you can see on the map here, the blue shaded areas are those areas that are high-quality transit areas or half-mile from major transit stops. And then the areas that are not shaded blue are where the city could require one space each for SB nine units. And then, as you heard me discuss before, within the coastal zone, you know, our experience has been where you have these sorts of projects within the coastal zone, and they require CDP. The coastal commission can certainly require parking requirements for those sorts of projects. In terms of leasing of SB nine units, there are existing rules that wouldn't change. You know, we obviously have an existing short-term rental and home sharing ordinance. None of that would change with respect to SB nine units. So they would need to be rented for longer than 30 days. And it prohibits the host from residing on one unit created on a parcel under SB nine and renting the other one as a home share. And under residential leasing regulations, you know, any SB nine unit would still need to be leased unfurnished to a natural person for a initial minimum term of one year and the tenants primarily resident. So that's if, you know, that, that unit is rented. And in looking at, you know, possible provisions in an SB nine ordinance, something that, you know, we've seen happen in other cities, and it has kind of been discussed in the general conversation on SB nine is really around onsite affordable units for SB nine projects. You know, we've gone through that analysis as part of the housing element update. We had done an R1 feasibility analysis, and really, the purpose was to understand how many units were necessary to support at least one inclusionary unit in a project. And, you know, as you're well aware, the results of that analysis showed that you need a minimum six to seven units to support an onsite affordable unit. So, you know, it's not something that we would advise in terms of requiring, you know, the city imposing an onsite affordable requirement in SB nine units. So, you know, that's, that's, I think, just linking together that prior analysis with this, you know, conversation around onsite affordable units. You know, I would note, this isn't, you know, not, that, that prior analysis isn't really to be applied in terms of SB nine generally. You know, as we've kind of shared in this presentation and in the staff report, you know, it seems that SB nine is really targeted towards homeowners. And because of the occupancy, owner occupancy requirements, you know, it really speaks to, it seems to be, you know, people adding on to their properties and, you know, maybe splitting, splitting off a lot and building something if they have the space for it. But, you know, it seems somewhat limiting in its applicability, I guess I'll say. You know, but it's not related directly to this feasibility analysis that was done previously. In terms of SB nine's intersection with ADU law, it doesn't require, as I said, the city to allow the ADUs on parcels that utilize the lot split pathway, and then combine that with the duplex path. So the statute is clear about that, that the city is not obligated to allow that. And the kind of practical effect of that is that, you know, you wouldn't have more than four future units. So if you had an existing R1 or OP one parcel, you know, and it was split, right, that what was, you know, formerly a single unit zone parcel, you know, could, would have no more than four future units on that, on. could, would have no more than four future units on that, on, you know, on, on that parcel after the lot split. For projects that have no lot split, there is no limitation within the statute on ADUs for projects that construct two units. But, and HCD did clarify, you know, because we were wondering like, well, what if there's a single-unit dwelling within ADU? Is that considered two units already? And they, they did clarify that that's really just a single-unit dwelling within ADU. So in those cases, they could certainly add an SB9 unit. And, you know, like I said, the city could consider not allowing ADUs and SB9 projects to kind of be merged together in that manner. So, you know, I think we, we took kind of a look at what the potential impacts of SB9 might be in Santa Monica. You know, this is a table showing just the various R1 neighborhoods. We didn't really include OP1 in here. It's kind of a very small part of the city and the lot sizes are actually very, very small. So I'm not sure, you know, how, how likely it is that, that it would be used in, in that sort of a situation. And, you know, R1 is sort of, you know, has most of the parcels. And what we've highlighted here is sort of these larger parcels, you know, how many of them that are existing over 10,000 square feet. They make up about 4% of the total R1 parcels and they're sort of concentrated in the north of Standisene area and the Pelceh Trac. I think this is just kind of, you know, we, we haven't done sort of deep analysis on this, but, you know, I think in our experience, you know, you see a lot of single-unit parcels that maybe you are very close to or maybe already at maximum parcel coverage. And, you know, is it realistic on sort of your typical R1 lot, you know, to be able to exercise, you know, to add another unit, you know, or to, you know, how, how would you split a lot, you know, without sort of removing some existing structures of some kind? So, you know, I think that those are just, just kind of thinking like, you know, is there the physical space to, to pursue an SB9 project? You know, I think that's just sort of, you know, well, it, it's, it's something that will, will, I think, you know, start to understand more as we, as we receive applications. I can say, you know, we, we have not received any application for an SB9 project thus far. It's really just been general inquiries as people are seeking to understand what this is. And, you know, if their goal is really, you know, adding a unit onto their property, you know, doing an accessory dwelling unit still remains very much the more popular path. And, you know, it really has many more advantages. Over the SB9 process, I, I would say, you know, most notably, there's time limits on approvals of ADUs. They, you know, don't count for any parcel coverage. The city is not allowed to charge fees and, and the like for that. You know, so I think in, in many ways, depending on what the goal is for that particular homeowner, you know, some people might choose that ADU path instead of SB9. In terms of SB9's interactions with SB330 and SB8, I think one thing we just wanted to point out, and in speaking with HCD, you know, they've indicated it's something they're looking very carefully at in terms of any implementing ordinances. It's that the, that any new implementing ordinances don't reduce the intensity of land use within existing zoning districts below what was in effect as, as of January 1, 2018. So, you know, any standards that were included in an ordinance, you know, would not reduce the residential development capacity that was previously allowed. So just for example, you know, the, the city, you know, couldn't create a, a, a new, you know, new development standards for SB, just especially for SB9 projects that had lesser parcel coverage, you know, than what is existing in the R1. So that's, that's part of the reasoning in terms of, you know, just applying. We, we just went through the update, you know, for the R1 zone and, you know, just continue that forward so that it, it just applies equally to, to everybody. So that's kind of an, an overview of SB9 and, you know, some of the issues that we found in kind of looking at the language. So to guide the commission's direction, you know, these are some, some areas that we identified in looking at the, at the statute, you know, that we might want to consider in the ordinance. Of course, the ordinance would follow state law and, you know, do, do what state law requires. But, you know, there's, I think one concept is really regarding the applicability of ADU law, how it intersects with SB9. As you've heard me say, SB9 does not require the city to allow, allow an applicant to exercise both ADU law and SB9. So should the city require the applicants can only choose either, either path, you know, not a combination of both. Secondly, deed restricting SB9 as a rental unit. You know, if, if, and, and this is a discussion and concept we've had as part of the housing element, of course, and, you know, an incentive for additional ADUs is, you know, really how do we ensure that these new units are actually contributing to alleviating and addressing housing needs? And, you know, should they be required to be deed restricted as rental units? Or, you know, to be used in, you know, in, in ways that, that are actually going to be used for, for housing? Owner occupancy is another one. In the statute, the duplex option does not require owner occupancy, but should the city require, you know, add this requirement to align with the pre-conditions of the lot split path? So that's really just bringing consistency between the two options together. Number four was, I'd identified the, the interplay of SB9 projects and the demolition thresholds for HRI properties. Should the SB9 ordinance make clear that, you know, potentially state law might override the local demolition ordinance for HRI properties? You know, and I think just, it, it's a little bit nuanced, but, you know, HRI properties, as you may be aware, they're considered technically demolished if 25% of the street-facing facades are removed. And, you know, that might trigger the 75-day waiting period. But if SB9 requires that byright process, it would seem, you know, that a C of A, you know, may not be allowed, like if, if the thing was, if, if the, if the property was, was designated, you know, as part of that process. I think we're just trying to understand, you know, whether that could even be allowed because it's supposed to be a byright process. And, you know, in any event, the city could not prevent the construction of a minimum 800 square foot SB9 unit. So I think that's something that we have to look a little further at. And then these, these three here are really sort of, I think, you know, less policymaking as just, you know, things for consistency with the municipal code. So in terms of the occupant being a natural person that's just existing, you know, lining up with leasing regulations and then obviously needing to update our land division ordinance to put in place procedures for processing SB9 projects. And then, you know, as we learn more in speaking with homeowners about their interest in SB9 and, you know, different ideas for projects that might come through, you know, I think over time we'll be making any necessary changes to, you know, further implement SB9 and for consistency with the statute. So with that, that's the end of my presentation and I'll stop sharing my screen and I'm happy to take your questions.
I see the first question I saw was Commissioner Lambert, but I think, must be having, Commissioner Landers seems to be popping in and out.
He went on, he, he's lost it.
Yeah, hopefully he'll join us again, but anyways, Commissioner Lambert, go ahead.
Can you, can you see, I had, I was kicked off and then I came back and I've been watching this whole time, but I didn't realize my camera was off. That was really weird.
Yeah.
I've been here.
Good to see you.
Okay.
I, I have a number of questions, but for me, the overriding one is, and I hope you can explain this. It seems like your, your approach is very much oriented toward retention of an existing single-family house and then adding a second unit under SB9. And I think, well, that's your discussion, rather than the new construction alternative. Whereas the, you know, the, the single-family home was taken, taken down and the two units were put up and replaced. And I know that we all have issues with HRNA's analyses and their numbers and da, 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 da. But it's actually on the public record and part of our staff report on page three of the, our HRNA analysis that new construction, two units using R1 standards is infeasible for the standpoint of market rate housing. So how do we justify using R1 standards for new construction when this is actually on the public record as showing it to be infeasible? And I understand HRNA was tasked with, you know, the middle-income feasibility and affordable feasibility, but they also did look at what, you know, what two units with R1 standards, how they could be marketed and their conclusion was that they are infeasible at market rates. So how do we, how do we justify this?
So, so again, I think what we are doing is implementing state law as written, right? Which is authorizing up to two units on a parcel. And, you know, this is not the city saying that, you know, you have to. The reason there's the focus on the, on the retention of the existing structure is that under the duplex option, it actually says that you can't demolish, you know, or the city doesn't have to allow demolition of more than 25%.
That's different.
Right? And, and I think certainly understood, right? And certainly you can have a discussion around whether that should be more, you know, whether you should allow more than that. But, you know, just reading the statute as what we're required to do, it seems to speak towards, you know, retaining that existing home. So that's.
Well, don't you, don't you agree that the statute actually says it's up to the local government as to.
It is. It is. Yeah, it is.
Not a requirement. So it could be an extension project.
It could be, but I, but a, a, again, you know, we're, we're at this point where, and that's why I started the presentation with, we are just presenting the statute as written. And certainly if you want to have a discussion and provide, you know, your thoughts and recommendations to the city council, you're welcome to do that with respect to the demolition threshold that is in the statute that speaks to what, you know, the city is required to allow. In terms of the lot split piece, because of the owner occupancy requirement, again, it speaks to like, somebody has to be living, like, I mean, it seems to literally say someone has to live on the site three years from the approval of the lot split, right? And, and, and so, you know, we, we do have a question, you know, should that owner occupancy piece be applied to the duplex pathway for consistency for both? You know, because it didn't, I, I don't know if it, I, I can't speculate as to like, why that was in there or not or what have you. You know, so that's just a question, you know, that we have presented. But the, the purpose of the, of the HRNA analysis in terms of the R1 feasibility was, you know, we were just trying to understand what would it take to have an onsite unit? And, you know, that's not what, that's not what this is. You know, we're not imposing an onsite requirement. So it's just, but, but it's about, but, but it also says, I mean, all of SB9's options, they require that, you know, it can't be rent-controlled or deed-disstricted housing. So you need to have been on the property for the past three years. And so it just, it, I, I, I don't think like, we're, we're, we're not trying to say anything other than presenting what we're reading, which it appears that it was intended to have somebody, you know, the retention of the existing structure, I guess I'll say, right? And so from that perspective, like, that's, that's, that's not, that does not align with the analysis that HRNA did.
Well, if you look, yeah, again, if you look at page three of the analysis, it clearly says that it's not feasible, feasible to build two new market-rate units using R1 standards. It says nothing, nothing about affordability on that page. So it's on the record and I assume that HCD is going to see that.
And that's not, that is, that is not what the statute is saying, I guess. Like, it's just, it's just saying that, you know, in order to qualify, you can't, you, you don't have to, you know, you, you, that you can't demolish more than 25%, but the jurisdiction can allow more than that if they want to. But if the jurisdiction doesn't want to, you know, they, they, they have other options to add on. I, I, I don't think that, that, that applicants or property owners are being prevented from exercising SB9's rights because you can, you can add, you can add the unit. I mean, you know, it, it's very clear that a minimum of 800 square feet and more, if you have the parcel coverage, you know, if you're under it, you could have more than that. You know, if, 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 if the parcel is not already at maximum parcel coverage.
I, I actually have a couple of very simple questions. I want to make clear that it's up to the city as to whether to allow ADUs in SB9 project and whether or not to do the four-foot side yard or the rear yard setback. That's totally discretionary, right?
I'm sorry, can you say that?
It's up to the city to say whether or not you can build an ADU as part of an SB9 project. It's the city's choice, whether it's a lot split or a duplex, right? And the same with the four-foot side yard and a rear yard setback. That's discretionary on the part of the city.
It's a, yeah, so if, if you wanted to impose one, it could not be more than four feet. So it's an up to maximum of four feet. And yes, you're right, it's, the, the city is not obligated to allow the combination of SB9 and, and ADUs. You could say that, no, you don't allow it, so yes.
Right, right.
True.
And then sort of a small point, there's, there's a, a part of the law that says that only residential uses can be on SB9 properties. What does that do to our childcare allowances in our zoning code? You may not be able to answer that now, but it's just something that popped out at me. Well, we have, don't we have like family daycare? I mean, we have some sort of childcare that can be in R1.
We do, yeah.
SB9 is only residential.
To be honest, I haven't.
No, that's kind of.
It's not an issue we've even looked at, yeah, so.
Sure, it's just way too arcane.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
I was gonna, I, I think you were about to say, that's all you have. I was gonna say, let's give somebody else a, a chance.
That's all, that's all I have, that's all I have.
Mr. Fontanari, I saw your hand up next.
Couple of easy questions. So in the, in the lot split option, can you cut the house horizontally rather than vertically or cut the property horizontally? Those, can you create air rights using the SB9 methodology, let's say?
That's an interesting question.
The reason I say.
I don't know, yeah, we, we'd actually have to look into that because of the, the standards, I think, have like, I'm not sure that was contemplated under the statute, I guess I'll say. Because what you're talking about is sort of a condo.
Is there are some buildings that are, you know, two units stacked on top of each other? Almost a standard duplex project? And could you then cut one in half, sell the lower unit, sell the upper unit? You know, and those, could you do that as a?
I think, yeah. Again, I think what you're talking about.
The land, you have to come down to the land, basically.
The way the statute is written, I, like, because you're talking about resulting lot sizes and, and things like that, I think that they were, they were not thinking about airspace. Well, they were thinking about like land, splitting the land. You know, because I don't know how you do it in terms of an air, like that, that's a condo. You know, so we could, we could look into that. I just don't think that was contemplated in whoever, you know, in what authors wrote this, yeah.
And then the other question is, and maybe there's nothing clear in SB9 regarding this, but, you know, a quarter of the properties in the north of Montana, 90402, in the last year were sold to corporations, not to natural individuals. And so if one person is living in the, in the building, does that person have to be 100% owner, 50%? You know, who, who's the owner in these cases? And, and, and how does that play out? I, I, again, I don't know if there's clarity on this, but to see where the question is.
Yeah, so we were, we, the, the reason I pointed out the AV1482 statewide rent control provision is because it, that's one of the conditions that qualifies a parcel from being eligible for an SB9 project. And I get, like, just, just reading that law and trying to apply it to this is that single-unit dwellings owned by LLCs, REITs or corporations are not exempt from AV1482. So it seems that, you know, if, if they were owner and, you know, then that, then that single-unit dwelling is rent-controlled and wouldn't, wouldn't be eligible for this, you know, if the owner was, was one of those kinds of entities. It has to be owner-occupied, single-unit dwellings that are exempt.
Right. Now, I noticed, okay. I noticed in the, all the, the studies the HRNA did, they always had some guest parking in there, in their various, you know, options they tried on. Was that because we're contemplating adding guest parking as a requirement? Or did they just throw that in there as a, you know, an option, let's say?
No, they were modeling, because if you remember at the time, we were contemplating rezoning R1, you know, some, some R1 areas into multi-unit zones, right? And so they, they were just applying parking standards that would normally apply. And so they, they were just applying parking standards that would normally apply in, in R2 zone, just as an example. So that's why there was a guest parking provision in there. We're not, we're not contemplating this in SB9. SB9 only allows the city to require one base in those areas that are not in the transit areas.
Uh huh. Okay. And then could you put up on the screen, the, where you had those bands by the neighborhoods and the lot sizes, just so I understand that correctly, what that was saying?
Was it this slide?
Let me see, yes. And, and there's two blue bands, the first one and the third one, that are north of Montana. What's the difference in those two? Just so I understand where we are geographically.
Oh, yeah, so this was the, and Ross, you might have to help me out here, because I think, I think I asked the same question and it was the northeast area, right?
Yeah. So, so basically, because the north of Montana area kind of covers quite a large area of land, we wanted to kind of break it up as, you know, north of San Vicente parcels are far bigger than the typical north of Montana parcel, for example.
Right.
So those three lighter blue parcels are, all are one north of Montana, just kind of different sections of it. Do you have a specific question on?
No, I was just curious why, where, but like, there's two things that are labeled north of Montana and, and, and there are, so is, is the dark blue band a summary, a total of all the things?
Correct.
Okay, I get it now.
The dark blue is a summary of the, the bottom lighter blue, which is, we wanted to kind of separate them out just for a little context.
All right, that's it for my questions for now. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner.
All right, can you hear me?
We hear you.
Thank you. Okay. Um, I am, I'm, I can't, I want to say, I can't look at this in a vacuum, so I'm going to preface my, my questions by saying that I, I can't unsee the HCD letter, though, so I have a few questions. And I recognize that you're, and I want to preface that by saying that I recognize that you're still processing the HCD letter. So if you need to get back to us on some of this stuff, I think, you know, I understand. But I do have some concerns. So the first, my first question is not that. We have quite a number of single family homes in R2. Is that, is that a fair statement in Santa Monica?
Yes, that's right.
Yeah, okay. Um, and I've been on the planning, you know, I've been around for about four years, paying attention for a little bit longer than that. Would you say that most of the time, planning is looking in R2 at single family homes becoming multifamily parcels? Or you, would you say that most of the time it goes in the other direction, that duplexes are being taken down and replaced with single family homes?
I would, I, I, I don't know without the data that I could, you know, say there's generally a trend. You know, what we do see is it, you know, while, while it's there, I'm not, I'm not sure it's the predominant, like, existing land use, you know, in our multi-unit neighborhoods. What we do see with turnover with some smaller properties, I'll say, just maybe very, very generally speaking, is that maybe they turn into condos more often than not, like the three unit condo project.
Sure.
Might be what we see, you know.
Mostly, yeah, those are the map we get, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so that's maybe more the most common outcome. I, I think we, we looked at this sort of, maybe like five or six years ago, we were trying to understand what was happening in multi-unit. And it seems those properties with, you know, fewer than five units, you know, tend to be the ones most vulnerable to change to those three unit condos. So there, there you go.
So that's helpful, right? Because from a real world perspective, we already have some case studies of what happens with relatively expensive land in Santa Monica. We're not seeing a rush to, you know, to, to, to fragment these units. If anything, they tend to consolidate, right? A five unit rental property becomes a three unit condo, right? More than, or, or a duplex becomes a single family. We've seen that in a couple of, where, I, I can't remember the last time I saw a single family home in R2 taken down to replace with duplex. SB9 is like R2 light, very, 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 very light. And so I wonder, like, to, to a certain extent, independent of the, independent of the, of the HRNA study, would we expect to see a rush to subdivision or, you know, duplexification or lot splitting, based on our experience?
I mean, I think you, you know, what, what we tried to present was kind of looking at, like, there's actually a lot of preconditions to even be eligible, you know, if you use your parcel for SB9, like, way more so than for an ADU, which is kind of why we were, we were trying to, and, and if you look at SB9, the provisions are, some of them are taken wholesale from ADU, it seems.
Right.
Like, like the, the, the language is nearly identical. And I think when you see the cumulative effect of, you know, it can't be, I think the biggest one is like tenant occupied in the past three years, right? Because we, we have been fielding questions from some existing property owners and are people looking to purchase a home and it's like, is there a tenant on there? Well, you know, sorry, you're just automatically disqualified, you can't even.
Right.
Pose that project, you know, or if it's, you know, with rent control within the meaning of, you know, AB 1482, like, that kind of, you know, it, it seems like it was written to quell kind of investor speculation, if you will. And we actually had a conversation with the bill's authors and not the legislative, like, if it's not in the language, you know, it sort of isn't. We were just trying to understand, like, what was meant, and they sort of did confirm that, like, that was what they were trying to do, you know, in terms of the bill's language. And, and so, you know, all we can do is just read what it says and, you know, kind of putting all of those things together. It does seem to like, you know, the pool of what would be eligible is not as big as when you started, I guess I'll say. You know, and, and I think even in the duplex option, right? We've been talking about that demolition threshold, you know, the 25% one, and you know, there, and that, that is, I, I agree, it is a policy choice. The city could certainly allow more, but you know, we don't have to either, and there may be reasons why ultimately the city, you know, doesn't want to go there or does, like, you know, that's part of this discussion. But if that stayed even, it just sort of, you know, seems that, and, and then looking at existing conditions in the physical space, you know, we looked at OP1, right? Those are very, very small lots to begin with. We know, we know from past experience that people that have tried to build single unit dwellings on those 25 foot wide lots, like, it's a Tetris puzzle. I mean, you can make it work, but it's not, it's not easy to do it. You know, and then existing parcels, if people spend, you know, we, we know the land prices in Santa Monica for R1 property, you know, does it make sense, you know, for someone to have even a homeowner that purchased that, you know, and like, what would they do with it, you know, is, is, if they ultimately wanted to sell it, is, are they replacing it with another single unit dwelling? I think it's, you know, we're just seeing what's happening in the market.
Right.
So I think.
So let me, can I go, I want to go one step further, because, because you're, you're naming some things, I remember when we were dealing with R1, we weren't, you know, OP1 and the mansionization issues, right, played out very differently in the OP than they did in R1 in terms of lot size, and we heard from people who are concerned about lot size. Would we have the ability in terms of this, these choices that you've described us as being able to make? Is it all or nothing? Or could we make some, could we, could we by location or parcel type target our permissions? Would we be allowed to do that under SB9? Or is it really just a binary choice? Yes or no? Like, right?
I don't think, I mean, I will say, just, are, are you asking whether we could say you get to use SB9 in some areas but not others?
No. I'm saying, okay, so I'll, I'll give a concrete example. And, and this, I can't unread the HCD letter, so I am reading this in the context of HCD's letter to us, right? So we know from the housing element that we have certain R1 neighborhoods that are clearly defined as racially concentrated areas of wealth. They are, they are defined in our housing element on the map. They tend to be north of Montana, right? And HCD has asked us two questions. They've asked us, what are we doing to, to, to implement fair housing, especially in our wealthiest, on our wealthiest land, parcels? And they've challenged us to not lean only on ADU production as a means of diversifying or addressing fair housing. So when I read that letter and I see the SB9 implementation and I worry about, you know, not over implementing SB9, but also not under implementing SB9, and I know that SB9 doesn't say you get to decide based on affordability concerns. I share those affordability concerns, but I question whether HCD shares them in our context. The question that I have is, would there be a legal bar for us to say, yeah, you can actually apply both the lot split and the ADUs north of Montana in areas of racially concentrated wealth, but you can't do that in Ocean Park? You can't do that in Pico, right? You can't do that somewhere else. Can we come up with an objective, could we come up with some objective thresholds in order to say, we're going to, you know, we're going to play with demo rules over here, we're going to play with the lot split ADU thing over here, because we actually want to make sure that we're targeting the implementation to a fair housing goal that we know is, is something that's on HCD's mind?
Yeah, I mean, I think you, I, I think conceptual, I, I don't know what the vehicle or, or the mechanism to do that would be, but, you know, it, the statute provides, I think, a lot of local control, actually, you know, in terms of how you allow this. It's, it's just, it's just kind of establishes like the framework, you know, of like the basics. You have to allow two units, have to be a minimum of 100 square feet, but there's actually, you know, that, that piece on the intersection with, with ADUs, it, it is, it is definitely a local choice. So I'm, I think it's generally, yeah, you could.
Where I'm going with this is, you know, I read the HCD, I'm sorry, I know it's not agendized, but it's, my opinions on SB9 are, are read in that context. I read the HCD letter that says, what are you doing about, about R1 and, and, and fair housing? We, there was a staff recommendation in our housing element about, you know, upzoning certain streets in R1, which SB9 kind of obviates in an interesting way. And for example, rather than go back to that old proposal, I would much rather go back to HCD and say, looking, we're doing a really aggressive implementation of SB9 in these neighborhoods, and we're doing a lighter implementation of SB9 for anti-displacement purposes over in those neighborhoods. And we think this actually aligns really well with our, with our, with our fair housing map. Like, that's the, that's where I'm heading with my questions, and we could, you know, we'll have time for discussion, but, but this is super helpful to hear you say that we do have that authority to kind of wield a scalpel and not an axe.
Yeah, and, and that's really what, all we were trying to do is just read it and, you know, with the myriad of state laws and how they cross over and, you know, where is there a hole or it's not clear, you know, to, to just identify it. I, you know, we're not saying we even have, we don't have the answers right now to it, it's just kind of presenting the option, you know, and, you know, I, I think you can, I, I think, you know, we, we've looked at this, it can be as flexible or not, you know, just depending on what the goals are, right? And so, you know, that's just helpful, that's helpful just as basic information to inform your discussion.
Any other questions? Commissioner Rasken.
Thank you. So kind of jumping off what Commissioner Landers was talking about, R2 neighborhoods, as I understand it, there's a unit cap for R2 neighborhoods that restricts density to basically one unit for every 2,000 square feet of lot lies. Is that correct?
Yes, or four, I think it's the lesser of four or one per two.
Right, right. Do you, happens to know offhand, if there are a significant number of R2 lots that are under 6,000 square feet?
I don't know that offhand. I'm sure we have looked at that somewhere in the last 18 months, but I don't know that off the top of my head, so.
Yeah, I, I'm just kind of curious about loopholes where R2 properties potentially could have a stricter development cap than one under the system.
Yeah, we can, we can look at that. I, yeah, I don't know that off the top of my head.
Yeah, all, all that being said, too, I, you know, I've brainstorming ways to, to protect trees in, in R1 lots, and as far as I understand it, essentially SB9 does weigh with the concept of a setback in R1 properties, right?
Yeah, so you, you cannot require a setback for an existing structure. So for example, you know, that, that illustrated scenario where it was like a front to back sort of lot split, you know, you could have an additional unit, like have a zero lot line on that lot split. And I think the only thing that the city could impose is the, if you wanted to impose a setback, it couldn't be more than four feet. So in that way, it is, it's very similar to ADU law in that sense that, you know, you don't, you don't have to impose a setback, but if you did, it can't be more than four feet on the side and rear.
Yeah, I, I mean, what I'm really getting at is that, that when we had done some preliminary work on, on a tree protection plan for, for R1 properties, the, the focus was on trees in the non-developable portions of lots. And so essentially SB9 really cuts back on areas where that would be applicable, because you can really do quite a lot with respect to the lot in terms of where you can place structures.
Yeah, I think, I mean, it, honestly, I think trying to understand and implement what would non-developable be because of these state laws that say the city cannot preclude, whether it's an ADU or an SB9 unit, you know, even if it is, goes beyond the zoning standards, right? You know, we, we could not prevent the construction, you know, whatever state law allows as the minimum, so that would be actually kind of hard to identify.
Yeah, got it. And, and then just one, one final question, jumping off something Commissioner Lambert was getting at earlier, and not to get too deep into the weeds here, but it, as far as I understand it, it's not the city's position that there's a legal barrier to requiring affordability covenants in the, a property that's split ultimately or developed into four units, but just that there might be practical considerations that would limit affordability or limit the practicality.
You're, you're asking about imposing like an onsite inclusionary requirement? Is that right?
That's correct, yeah.
Yeah. I, I think our concern is that the statute is clear that the city cannot impose standards that preclude, you know, effectively preclude and the construction of an SB9 unit. So to the extent we have analyses that say, you know, if you, there's, there's a minimum number of units that can support an onsite inclusionary, and we're imposing a requirement on a project that isn't meeting that minimum threshold, I think we would be concerned, you know, that it doesn't, it's not in line with the, the statute in terms of, you know, a standard that is precluding, that, that, that doesn't preclude the construction of an SB9 unit.
Got it. All right, that's all I got, thanks. Oh, sorry, took me to get you off there.
No, no, no problem, yeah.
Any other questions at this point? Seen no other questions. So staff, you want to frame exactly what you would like to get from us in terms of direction to consult?
Sure. So it, it's actually the, the questions that are in the sort of back of your staff report on the last, hopefully the last couple pages, I want to say. And my agenda is not working very well right now, but it is the questions around the applicability of ADU law. Let me, let me actually put up my screen here. the questions around the, um, applicability of ADU law. Let me, let me actually put up my screen here.
Eric, do we have any public comment on this one?
Oh, you know, I'm, I'm sorry. You're absolutely right. We should do that. So why don't we ask Melissa, Melissa, you probably need to throw up the call in number.
Sure do. Give me one moment and I will share my screen.
Thank you, Commissioner Landers. I had dropped that ball. So for the public certification, we're now opening the public call in for this item. The phone number is on the screen. We'll give you a minute or two to call in. Minute. So that's our minute. I'm sure Melissa will let us know if we have anybody.
Nobody.
Okay. Um, I'm tempted to allow that to sit for another minute. And if anybody calls in or two, we will take them, but I think we can kind of have some of our, we can move to our discussion and come back to public comment if we do get a, a phone call in the next two minutes. Commissioner Lambert?
Um, this is a sort of a generic comment. Um, I believe, again, harkening back to the HCD letter, which I wish I could get out of my mind, um, that we really need to, at least on paper, make a full throttle, good faith effort to implement SB nine in a way that it actually produces housing units. That's my concern. And then that it not be basically a super duper ADU program.
Okay. Well, we'll need to help give staff some direction on how to do that. But Commissioner, so Commissioner Landers?
Yeah. I mean, in terms of specific direction, I think would be very helpful if the landmarks commission could take a look at the question of the 20th, you know, of, of the, of the relationship between the demo and, and how landmarks are processed. I think, it's a big deal in our community and we need to have a public clarity about what's happening. That having been said, I share with, as I sort of implied, I share with Commissioner Lambert, um, my concerns uh, about the, um, implementation here. I think we need to be aggressive in our implementation. I think we need to be targeted in our implementation. So I would like to see us, you know, go full throttle in the areas of racially concentrated wealth. I'd like to see lot splits. I'd like to see, um, ADUs. I'd like to see the combo. I'd like us to go to the state standards on the setbacks. Um, you know, I have strong feelings about unit caps, so I'm gonna hold on to those for another time. Um, but I think we need to demonstrate because what I will say is that I believe that one way we respond to the HCD letter asking about R one and asking about fair housing is we say, well, SB nine hadn't passed last October. So now that it has, we are going to demonstrate our commitment to these things by fully implementing SB nine in a manner that is consistent with Santa Monica's specific fair housing profile. Uh, and so that's, that's where I would go in the direction that I would offer to staff is, um, target it. Um, and, and, uh, maximize it, but, um, make some careful choices. Uh, you know, there are parcels in Santa Monica that are ADU compatible. They have alleys in the back. Um, there's different kind of access. You can lot split those, you can ADU those. There are many single family homes um, where it's just not realistic to do that. And I also think that I would, the last thing I would say is, I, on my, I'll, I'll say for owner occupancy, I, I was not super happy about the discussion of owner occupancy only because people regularly have to move out of their homes um, in order to accomplish renovations. And we do not claim that they are no longer owner occupants. An owner occupant is someone whose primary residence is at a particular address, even if they temporarily reside somewhere else. They have no other permanent address and they intend to return to that address. Um, they're not an absentee landlord. And I don't think anybody is suggesting that people would be under those circumstances. I also believe, and maybe I'll just say the quiet part out loud, I think some of this is going to get resolved through litigation. Hopefully not in our city, but elsewhere, just as the ADU laws got resolved through litigation, candidly. Um, that, uh, with respect to owner occupancy, my understanding, and it's a concern I have about SB nine, is that it's not that they have to actually live there for three years. They have to sign an affidavit that they intend to live there for three years, right? Somebody loses a job, somebody has a spouse pass away, somebody gets extremely ill and has to move into a different kind of living situation. There are many good reasons why someone would certainly intend to live there, but wouldn't actually live there. Um, and there are also some nefarious ones, and I worry about enforcement where someone's like, yeah, sure, I, sure, wink, wink, not nod, I intend to live there. Um, so we gotta be really careful about that, but I also think that we have to be very clear in how we talk to the public and the council that SB nine is about intent and are willing to sign an affidavit asserting that, but it is not about a requirement. So those are my comments. I hope you could hear me. The, 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 my signal is really bad.
I heard you very clearly.
Right. Thank you very much, Chair.
Okay. Commissioner Fresco, you look like you want to raise your hand. You're, you're muted.
Sorry. Hold on. I was just trying to, because the question staff wanted to ask, I had things to say and I was getting organized.
Okay. So I think, I think if that's where you want to head to, I think that's a good idea unless any other commissioners have other comments. We should put those questions up on the screen. And as a commission, kind of go around and give a round of comments on that. It looks like before that, maybe Commissioner Raskin has a, a comment, so.
Well, I was about to, okay.
I just wanted to mention that I have some comments that are unrelated to the questions and, uh, you know, I can save those until afterwards, but, um, I'll defer to the chair.
I was gonna suggest, because I think, I thought you were the only one who had that, that we go ahead and get those kinds of things out right now, Commissioner Raskin, and then we go to the questions. That's why I moved on from you, Commissioner Fresco. I apologize, but that my intent was to get anything not related to these five items out right now. So Commissioner Raskin, go ahead.
Yeah. I mean, I'll just say for the record that, um, I, I hope we can find some creative solutions to implement a, uh, tree ordinance that is, uh, harmonized in some way with SB nine. Uh, I think that's going to be a challenge, but, um, I'm hopeful that it can happen. Uh, I also think that we can think of maybe some creative ways to get inclusionary requirements into SB nine that aren't, um, you know, along the lines of what we've traditionally done or just strictly requiring it. Maybe there's a way for the city to help out in terms of making these projects pencil. Uh, and maybe there's a way to, um, you know, provide some sort of flexibility in, in development standards above and beyond they already have that would, that would allow for some sort of inclusionary program to, to, uh, to be baked into this. All that being said, you know, I, I don't think that an inclusionary program in R one zones is gonna do much, if anything, to get us where we need to be for arena numbers, but, um, you know, every drop in the bucket helps. Um, I, and, and I, I am concerned about, about the gentrification aspect of it. And you know, there, there are, uh, you know, going to be cascading effects citywide as this plays out. And, you know, I don't think that there's much that we can do to stop it legislatively or policy wise. This is, this is the direction that the state is going. Um, but, um, yeah, I also want to echo, uh, what Commissioner Landers was saying about making sure that the owner occupancy rules are, are enforced in a, uh, meaningful and realistic way. Um, and, um, you know, to the extent that we can incorporate other creative housing policies into this legislative framework, we should think about doing it. For example, if there's any legal way to create a vacancy tax on folks who build units, don't actually have them occupied, I'd like to see that. But, um, you know, again, this is all at the very broad level and we can get into specifics later. So that's all I got.
Thank you very much. So commissioners, just preference here, we have five questions. Do we want one commissioner to comment on all five, or do we want to go one, one question at a time and everybody gets their licks on that question?
It'll go faster if we all do, and there's seven, first of all. And I think it would go faster if we each just one shot at all seven.
Where, where's the seventh one?
Oh, I'm looking at the one staff posted in the, uh,
Oh. Thirteen other staff report.
Yeah. So, so sorry about that. We, we, we just named like, because we didn't number, for example, I think the other changes is necessary. So you don't really maybe need to discuss that.
Oh, you want me to look at the staff report instead of this?
Yeah, you, I, I mean, I, I think you can follow the presentation because we sort of numbered it to be more clear. Um, so just so, you know, we, we did upload the presentation before the meeting, so you can use that as a quick reference.
Okay, then I will use it.
How do we, how do we get that?
It's on your agenda.
It's on the website. It's on the agenda. It's on the website.
But I'm using my computer.
Yeah. So just open a new tab in, in, uh, in whatever browser you use and pull it up.
I don't know how to do that.
Well, if you have your, I think you're going to be okay. If you have your staff report.
Yes.
And, and have the five, it seems like they've divided up one of those into two more. So you, they're already.
Yeah, you'll, you'll be okay.
Okay. I just trust you guys.
Let's put verify, Commissioner Lambert. Okay. So with that said, I think we're gonna take this, we're gonna take this and one commissioner gets shot at all of these comments. And I would like Commissioner Fresco to start, please.
Okay. Um, I'm not gonna say everything. I mean, it's really obvious that Commissioner Landers, for example, has lots of ideas. I'm not gonna try to anticipate his ideas. I'm just going to, uh, kind of give it a shot. Um, I think that, uh, in order to robustly, uh, implement this, we should allow ADUs on parcels where they fit. It seems kind of like a no brainer. Obviously on a small parcel where we're giving extra lot coverage to get to 800 square feet, maybe not, but if there's room, why not? Um, deed restricting as a rental unit, I think is a really great and important idea. That's always been a suspicion I've had about ADUs all along because I know people who build them for home offices and rec rooms and guest cottages. And we want to make sure we get more units and, uh, I think that's pretty important. Um, owner occupancy, I, I agree, it's really tricky. What I was thinking about that seemed hard is that a lot of even individual homeowners own their homes through a corporation. So how do we know who owns the corporation? Is it the owner of the corporation? Who has to live in that house? Has, does it have to be a family member of that? I don't know. Just it's really tricky. Uh, but I appreciate that this is a way to help people. This can be a way to help people stay in homes if we, uh, try to cut out the, uh, prospectors. Um, I have a lot in my mind about demolition thresholds in HRI properties. I think that if we raise it to above 25 for these and they don't get that exception for HRI properties, it's going to become a loophole to demolish buildings on the HRI without review, and that would be a disaster. Uh, you know, I personally fought for like, well, lobbied, I should say, for 14 years to get that 25% threshold into our demolition ordinance. And I'm fiercely and adamantly protective of it for HRI properties. Uh, if you want to give people more flexibility, if they're not on the HRI, that's one thing we can't afford. We don't have the staff time to go ahead and confirm what's a landmark and what's not. That would always be the first choice, but we can't do it. It's impossible. So we need to keep that protection in there. So I would really adamantly, uh, say that we cannot let that go. We have to keep that there 25%. It triggers demolition. It triggers demolition. We just have to go through with that. Um, occupancy must be a natural person. Uh, that's a little different from the owner occupancy thing and a little bit different with a thermometer, but, um, but yes, uh, update land division ordinance, codify, uh, yeah, obviously. Um, other changes necessary. Uh, so, um, in terms of other things, uh, what Ellis was saying about the trees is, uh, while I have spoken very clearly in the past about, uh, the racist, uh, ru, uh, foundation or under source of R one and the whole idea of, you know, your own fence domain protected from everyone else. And that whole idea is so exclusionary. Um, but, uh, the result, you know, and the whole idea of setbacks was designed to make it so that people who needed help to invest in those neighborhoods would have to invest somewhere else that you really could only buy in an R one neighborhood if you could really afford it. And then some to have all that extra land that you couldn't even build on. So there's that, but the result of that is that we ended up with these garden streetscapes in certain parts of the city, which are of great and enormous value with tree cover and private property. And, uh, assuming they don't block everything out with the hedges and tall fences. Uh, it's a real public asset. So there has to be a way to marry some of those priorities so that the public has beautiful verdant streets to walk down if they choose to walk in neighborhoods like that versus neighborhoods that are, you know, less tree lined. Uh, you know, that's just something to consider. I don't know how you do it. Maybe, uh, setbacks can be uh, more relaxed when there's alleys and, uh, which would, um, allow for a deep, a deeper setback in the front. I don't know what we can do. But something to, uh, keep that quality on those streets. And that's all I have for now. Maybe after I hear you, I'll think of more things. But in my little bubble, that's what I had.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next commissioner, anybody want to raise their hand or I can? Commissioner Lambert, thank you. Okay. I think she didn't want to speak and she jumped off. Oh, there she is. Now she's back.
I hit the wrong button. Sorry.
Okay.
Um, okay. I'll go down the list. Um, I think that we should keep the option of building an ADU on any property in the city with an SB nine project. Understand the importance of targeting certain areas because of fair housing, but I think just to increase the housing supply in general, we should, we should make a citywide, clearly there's some parcels that can accommodate an SB nine project and ADU, but there are many that can. So I, I think it should be citywide. Um, I think that deed distributing an SB nine unit as a rental unit is, um, is totally opposed to it. Um, and the reason for that is I think it's financially infeasible and it will kill a new construction project. When you look at the development costs for building a second unit, given our land prices, et cetera, there's no way you could ever collect the rent necessary to pay for that unit. So I don't think it even works. So I would be against that. Owner occupancy, I'm fine with keeping the law the way it is, or not that I have a choice. But the lot split of occupancy, and I think Sean is right, that is kind of vague. I'm just someone, because if something totally beyond their control has to leave their house, they shouldn't be penalized for that. So I think that needs more definition. I'm against putting owner occupancy on the duplex path. I think that's too onerous, in favor of it. And I'm only in favor of natural persons. I don't associate with anyone who's not a natural person. So, except you guys, except you guys.
And that's remotely.
That's right, I wouldn't touch with a 10 foot pole. Update land division ordinance, codify the ministry, that, that makes sense. In terms of demolition, I think we should remove the demolition definition for any properties other than HRI property. And we should remove the 25% limit again for any property that is not on the HRI. Because I share need is concerned about that. I'm also not in favor of just putting H, putting R1 standards on SB9 project without being a little more scalpel, using a scalpel a little more than, than we happen. And then what occurs is that I, if we're talking about new construction, we're probably talking about a larger number for parcel coverage. But then 45%, I know that 55% is if you keep the existing house. But I think if you're building new construction of a duplex, you're going to need more than 45% parcel coverage. I think the height should stay the same, 28 feet. And then I'm in favor of the four foot side yard setbacks, not so much the rear exit. But those are my thoughts.
Great, thank you for putting those together. Commissioner Landers?
All right, here we go. Here is where I am. And I'm going to go with the staff report, the slide. All right, so I, I believe that, that applicants should be permitted to exercise both ADU law and SB9, certainly north of Montana. I think staff should take a look at other parts of the city to see which is the, is, I would, I'd be inclined to look at north of Montana, northeast and, and probably Sunset Park where I live for exercising both. Mostly because I want to give people lots of flexibility and different places have different alleys. And we want to be careful about that. I would be wary of allowing both in the Pico single family neighborhood. And I would be wary of allowing both in the Ocean Park. I just, I think we're just, you know, it's, we're running into trouble there. I believe that deed restricting the SB9 unit would count as a constraint since we would be imposing an additional condition on, on top of state law. I think we'd put our housing element at risk as much as I want it to happen. And would be interested in incentives. I don't think we can require, I don't, I actually don't think we can require it. And, and to be honest, again, I'm going to say the quiet part out loud. I don't think the state is interested in our ensuring that additional, additional units will contributing to alleviating income related housing needs. I, I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned about the prospect of litigation or the non approval of our housing elements. So I think we need to look at this as a housing access piece and a diversification piece. And we can hope for the best. But I think this helps us build not a barbell economy or a barbell housing market in Santa Monica, but one that has a lot of the missing middle added to it, even at prices that, you know, for the vast majority of human beings are not affordable. They, they would, they could be affordable, you know, even a lot split, even a lot split north of Montana, if it could generate a $2.5 million townhome, that could potentially be affordable to a two income professional family under the right kind of mortgage circumstances. So that is a lot more accessible than a $10 million house. With respect to owner occupancy, I said what I said earlier. I, I, I would not require owner occupancy on the duplex path. Again, because I've made concerns about housing constraints, but I think we have to be very, very careful about what we're doing there. I have an idea for demolition thresholds on HRI properties, which is not to regulate the land use, but to regulate the sale. And I, I'm going to say, like, I'm not sure where we go, but I, and I don't know what the law permits. But essentially, I'm thinking, I don't believe that it's very likely that people, unless they're building kind of a multi generational home with multiple units, that people are going to do a lot of self conversion of their own properties. I think what's far more likely is that someone will come in, sign an affidavit that they intend to live in one of the units that they're going to create, and then demo the building that they buy because the land makes it worth it for them to do that. So what I'm looking for is a tool, maybe that doesn't, you know, I agree with, with exempting non HRI properties. But even with the HRI properties, I want to protect them. And I'm very concerned about staff's worry that there's a bump up between, right? Like there's a bump up between our 75 day demolition review and the 25%. And I'm wondering if there's anything that we could do at the time that the property is sold to, you know, try to, try to limit what a prospective owner could do with it. Or make it unappealing in some way without, without harming the economic interests of the, of the seller, right? You know, I don't know, like, how do we incentivize people to Mills Act or whatever? I don't know what we can do, but I, I think we should look for non land use related tools alongside protecting the HRI properties. Notwithstanding the fact that we want some of the occupants of these parcels to be natural trees, yes, the occupants should be a natural person, at least the occupants of the buildings themselves. Yeah, I think we do need to update, that's, that seems to be a, that's a cleanup. We do need to remove the public hearing requirement, agreed sadly, but, but I think we do have to do that. And then other changes necessary. Look, the city of Los Angeles sent out a very helpful fact sheet a couple of weeks ago. And I think that if you're, if you are making a list of things to do, I think one of the list of things to do is to think about a very clear guidebook. When ADUs came out, we spent a lot of time celebrating the San Diego County model plans. I think we would do well to kind of identify the kinds of, the kinds of SB9 projects that the city values and perhaps do some, do some clarity, achieve some clarity there by making sure that we're clearly communicating to the public what they, what they are able to do. And certainly lean in the direction of, of really celebrating projects that reflect our values in, in our communications to the public. So those are my ideas.
Great, thank you so much. Mr. Fonda Bernardi?
Yeah, thank you. So as far as the ADU law, question number one. So the big context is we're watching the R1 neighborhoods get gutted. And there's very little we can do about it. So we're really in some sort of way, in sort of some form of damage control. And the way to control the damage of the combination of the ADU and the SB9 is to have some sort of lot size requirement. If the lot is a certain size, you can do both. If the lot is less than that, you can't. And we can debate about the size, what that threshold should be. But that's the easiest way to set it up so that it doesn't happen in the wrong places, if you will. Deed restricting, I think it's a very difficult thing to do. And I don't think we really need to do that. It doesn't, I'm not sure what it buys us other than building more of a city of renters. What we're really saying is we want to increase the amount of renters. And I've loved renters because everyone has been a renter at some point probably in their life. But what we're really trying to do is get some sort of ownership. So I'm not sure that restricting it as a rental unit is a good thing. Own your occupancy, I think that one's been beat to death. I think that's a tough one and it has all the caveats that Commissioner Landers mentioned. Thresholds for the HRI properties, the higher the better. We don't want the HRI properties to essentially pay the price of what Sacramento is trying to make us do. Natural person, no, that's a no brainer. And I think six, number six is codifying the procedure is, is I think something we have to, there's no workaround to that. That's just the way it is. Those are my opinions on that.
Fantastic. Mr. Raskin, I believe that leaves you and I, so if you would take the lead.
Sure, thank you, Chair. So, you know, with respect to the ADU issue, I mean, I, I really only have anecdotal evidence for this, but I have seen tons of ADUs that are used as home offices and not actually rented out to separate households. So I think that, you know, if we were to go down the path of allowing ADUs, we'd have to do it in a way that makes sure that they're actually occupied by a separate household or used meaningfully in some way as housing, maybe by, you know, someone else in the same household who would otherwise be looking for housing somewhere else. But I don't know, maybe we have to put a ban on, on home offices and ADUs. I don't know, it's not an easy question. But the other aspect of the ADU issue too is that oftentimes ADUs don't have parking requirements. So I think we'd have to think intentionally about, you know, whether those would be located within proximity to transit. I'll have to give that one some more thought. As for the number two, I, I feel very strongly that we should deed restrict rental units. If we don't, we're going to price out the vast majority of people from these neighborhoods. And it's not going to meaningfully contribute towards affirmatively furthering fair housing. In fact, it's going to make our city less equitable in terms of the people who are living here in terms of making our city a place where only the affluent can afford to live there. I, I feel very strongly that we should deed restrict, as it says, rental units. Owner occupancy, yeah, absolutely. I agree with basically what everyone has said before. For the HRI issue, I, I, I agree with Commissioner Fresco and Commissioner Fonda Bernardi. I, I, yeah, I don't have much more to say there. Natural persons, yeah, absolutely. I think the city's been a leader on that issue and we should keep going. Procedures for SB9 projects? I don't know if there is much discretion we really have there. I think that, you know, this is what it is. And aside from that, I'll just reiterate that I think we can think creatively about how we can maybe allow for some more flexibility in the development process to ensure that we can maybe squeeze in a few inclusionary units or maybe allow flexibility in, in where units can be located or stacked on lots in order to preserve trees. You know, this is a brave new world and we've, we've got to think creatively here. I'll, I'll end it there.
Great, thank you. It's going to be tough for me to come up with anything new on this, but I will say just from the outset is I, I hate the fact that we're in this position. I'm upset that we have to blow up the R1 zone. In may, in a lot of cases, because of our, our really good ability, and by saying we, I mean citizens, not just in Santa Monica, to stop development in other places where, along transit corridors and near jobs, where it makes more sense to me to do this. With that said, there's a law in front of me that we're, we're, we're pregnant with and how we're going to deal with it is in front of us. So in terms of ADUs, I, I think it was brought up by Commissioner Raskin. It would be weird if we got into a situation where we allowed more density in the R1 than the R2. So I'm, I'm, but I'm also sold, I also like the idea of Commissioner Landris. Well, maybe we should incentivize this in areas of economic dominance or whatever the term they used. That's not the right term, but where, where there's a lot of wealth as a way to increase density and try to spread out some of the, the equity issues. So I'm wondering if there's a way to bifurcate that, which I think was brought up by Commissioner Landris earlier. Deed restricting rental units, and you know, there's two things here. I think there's a, there's a discussion that we're, we would restrict them to, you can only rent these. And I just think I heard a com, a comment that we should restrict them to an income level. I think it would be great if we could do, make the, make it, this is a requirement that they're rental units. I'm not supportive of affordability level on that. But I do go back to Commissioner Landris's comment that this probably would become a constraint that would hurt us with our, our housing element. So I'm supportive of it up until the point where it becomes a constraint for our housing element. And then I would choose to get rid of it. Owner occupancy, the only thing I want to add there is I find it hard to believe that an owner couldn't, I mean, that you had to leave a house there and they had to be there during construction. I don't think that's really the intent. I think the intent is, once you've subdivided, built the building, the person has to come back and live there for three years. And I think that's, that's a great, that's a great way to control speculation. But that's my read of it, is that you can actually not live there during the construction process. I don't, I don't really have anything on the HRNA issues, I'm sorry, the HRI issue to report. And I can't find anything to disagree with, with five and six. So those are my, my comments. Commissioner Landers?
Yeah, it was coincidentally, I got an email, one of these like newsletter things. Someone earlier had raised the question, it may have been Commissioner Fresco, a concern about the ownership of homes and proving who is the owner of a home. And I'll just note this for staff, it may be worth some research. Something called the Corporate Transparency Act is a federal law that's about to come into effect. It was part of the anti money, bleh, the Anti-Money Laundering Act of 2020. And what it will require is that any individual who owns 25% or more of a, or otherwise sort of has control over company, which could be an LLC or a corporation or a trust or professional corporation, is required to self identify to the IRS. So in terms of, you know, what the way homes are held in Santa Monica, to the extent that that law is about to come into effect and start requiring the creation of a public, some form of a registry, that could be a tool that could be available to staff to verify who actually is the beneficial owner of a property for the purposes of determining owner occupancy. But I, I don't, I don't know that they're going to create some big public registry that anybody can go and look up. I think it's worth staff sort of exploring whether or not that, that data is going to be, would be available to states or municipalities. Also, just for the record, there's a bill pending that will be helpful. I'll just add this in, there's a bill pending in the state sponsored by, I will say, rock star Assembly Member Buffy Wicks, who, to create a statewide rental registry. And I think it would be very important for us to ensure that that rental registry includes single family home rentals to assist the city in enforcing the tenant piece, the tenant protections associated with SB9. So those are two legislative tools that might be available as we move down this road.
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi, you had your hand up?
Yeah, actually, Sean, to answer the question I was going to ask, I'm not sure the IRS information will be available to the public. It usually is not, so I don't, I don't, but I like the idea of a registry because, you know, every time we say there's 10% affordable units here, I'll bet you if you took an audit 10 years later, half of those affordable units would no longer be affordable. It's very hard to manage that. And even though we have a whole set of the bureaucracy, which is the Rent Control Board, which does a great job trying to herd the cats, I'm not sure they have the auditing capability to go in and make sure that things that were decided, and this unit here was earmarked at this rent level, whatever the AMI was, 30%, whatever, 50%, is still that five, 10, 15, 20 years later. You know, I'm, I'm not sure how, how airtight our system is, is the question. It'd be interesting.
Right. And, and to, to, at the risk of, of like taxing everything that moves, while I would not be interested in banning, banning home offices, Commissioner Raskin, you do, in relation to what Commissioner Fonda. to what Commissioner Fonda Bernardi was saying, the creation of a registry would create the opportunity to say, you can pay a vacancy tax or a business tax. Those are your choices, or you can make it available for housing, right? Those are your choices. If it's not occupied by a family member, then in, you're doing business there, where's our tax, right? So that would be another way to go. That's not a land use regulation, by the way, so it's not technically a constraint.
Mr. Lambert.
I just want to say, I'm not sure, I don't think I did make it clear that I'm not in favor of moving forward without looking more carefully at applying R1 standards to the SB9 projects. I'm just not comfortable that gives us what we want with SB9 development. So that's where I stand. I don't, I'm not in favor of that, just carte blanche, R1 standards being applied, without looking more carefully at block coverage and height, et cetera, to see if it really works beyond creating an 800 square foot unit, which is, that's an ADU.
Okay, I want to just, let me just interject really quick, Commissioner Raskin, that on this whole issue of properties bought with corporations, when I, in my job, I work with property owners that are, properties are owned by corporations all the time, and to file applications, I need to show the articles in incorporation that shows who the owners are, and that's how you can tell, you know, who, you know, many times it's multiple people, but there's always somebody who has the majority. And so I do believe that that's a document that somebody could submit to the city and answer that question. Commissioner Raskin.
Yeah, so unrelated, you know, staff had mentioned that people who want to develop properties in R1 or OP1 parts of the coastal zone still have to get Coastal Commission approval. It's been my experience that the Coastal Commission has acquired property owners in other areas of the South Coast District where there are not certified local coastal programs, really maximize density at all costs within the coastal zone. The logic being that if you develop in places like Los Angeles, where there's already a built-out area, that it's going to prevent sprawl in undeveloped parts of the coastal zone. But that being said, you know, I, I think that this is yet another reminder that we should really get our local coastal program finished so that we can have local control over development in the coastal zone.
Well, sure, we'll find time to do that next year. No, I mean, I, I'm sorry, I don't mean to make a joke of it. I agree, that is important. Okay. Staff, is there anything that you, you need us to opine on that we have not opined on yet, before I ask for any last comments?
Can I just ask a question?
You sure can.
Our comments today are to help staff with the next step. They're not part of a recommendation to council, are they?
We will, yes, I mean, I, I think it's helpful that all of you went through the questions, because we're asking the same questions of the council, and I actually see a lot of consensus or alignment, actually, in your, in your comments. Certainly, if the commission wants to choose to, you know, vote on a motion as a body, you can certainly do that. But, you know, I think we have some pretty clear, like, we, we would summarize the commission's discussion for the council study session scheduled for March 8th, just so, you know, what the commission's discussion was is communicated to the council, and it may inform their discussion and direction to staff, you know, as we return with an ordinance.
Thank you. I think that, you know, certainly I did hear a lot of consensus in a lot of areas. So just where there's not consensus, tell them what the issues were, which I don't think is too far-fetched in this case. Not too much writing.
Commissioner Landers.
I don't know if this is welcome, but one of the things that's, one of the things that's a grave concern for me is the relationship between SB9 and the housing element. And so I would move, and in addition to the comments that we shared, that I think staff will summarize and write up, I would move that it is the sense of the planning commission that the council should take no action with respect to implementation of SB9 that might hinder the certification of the housing element.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
I second it.
Is there a discussion on that?
Very good idea.
Commissioner, Commissioner Raskin.
Yeah, I mean, Mr. Landers, I, I hear where you're coming from. I mean, I think that, I, I just don't know if it's necessary, because, I mean, we have needed, the city has an independent duty to comply with the housing element law and an independent duty to comply with SB9. I, I, I don't, I'm a little bit confused what the, what the motion would accomplish, since these are two, you know, unique legislative schemes that the city both has to independently comply with.
Commissioner Fresco.
Maybe a way to phrase it that would actually make a little more sense to me would be to ensure that when thinking about the implementation of SB9, they think about maximizing its impact on our housing element or the...
How it can facilitate or further.
I think it considers how.
Yes, that's good, right, so.
I mean, the way you...
Positive rather than the negative. Okay, so, so is the sense of the planning commission that SB9, implementation of SB9 ought to advance, facilitate?
Yes.
Provides an opportunity. Facilitate the certification of the housing element.
Good point, good.
I like that much better, thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, wait, say it one more time where, where there's...
It is the sense of the planning commission, it's a sense of the body resolution, that the implementation of SB9 ought to facilitate the, the certification of the housing element and the implementation thereof.
I don't think you need that part.
Well, no, because it, SB9 is also proof that it's not just that SB, that a good implementation of SB9 right now will help us get our housing element certified, it's that it'll also help us actually implement what's in the housing element. It's a both, it, it could accomplish both goals.
And so just to be clear...
I second that.
...consistent with your agenda item, that this is a recommendation to the city council?
Correct.
Right.
Yes.
I just have one thing to add. I would, with all due respects, I know how much, how much work you're doing on all of the staff, that you maybe downplay the fact that the city opposed SB9.
Yeah.
And you've written communications to the city council, and you're, because of that, we're going to take a conservative approach to its implementation. They may, that may not be in our best interest.
Okay, let's follow the question on this recommendation.
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi.
I'll abstain.
Commissioner Fresco.
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert.
Yes.
Commissioner Landers.
Yes.
Commissioner Raskin.
I will also abstain.
And Chair Reese.
I'd vote for this.
Yes.
Yes, let's say yes.
Thank you.
Okay, now, I believe, I got to find my agenda again, hold on. Okay, so we're done with 4A. Thank you for that, staff, and forward to working through these issues over the next year with you. Nothing on staff administrative items, no public hearings, no resolutions. We have three written communications, which we've all had the opportunity, or we should all be reading. Do we have any planning, planning commission member discussion items I'd like to have for the future? Not hearing any. We're now at public comments, so I'd ask that the one-minute timer be put up, and we'll announce to the public that we are now taking comment on anything that is not on our agenda tonight. You know, I am going to go back to say that on number nine, I'm hoping that we come to the, the point where we do elections of chair and vice chair soon. Hopefully, that paperwork has been taken care of, and it can go on to the next agenda.
We will follow up with the city clerk on that.
Thank you.
I noticed our former commissioner was paying, was logged on in the beginning of our meeting, and then she left.
Really?
Yep, yep. You just couldn't stay away.
Yeah.
Not too late, Alisa. Okay, I believe we're at zero, we're, we're done. Do we have any callers?
No callers.
Folks, I think this is the point of the night where I get to adjourn the meeting, and without any objections, I would like to adjourn it and congratulate our local football team on their Super Bowl champion.
Absolutely.
The Rams.
And all 10 people who went to the parade today.
More than people who showed up here to talk about SB9.
Right.
Everybody have a great evening.
You too.
Bye.
Thank you.